Okay. Okay. Do you want me to? Read them over again, or what do you just keep going? Please keep going. Okay.
Yeah.
All right, the next one on that list, you already signed off on that was the animal shelter washer and dryer that broke that we had to replace for nineteen thousand dollars. I just wanted to put that on the list and show you. The following one, a thousand dollars for Bailey Acres Emergency Repair. So we have enough money in the fund balance to pay for this, but when the sewer system backs up, you don't.
Where's Bailey Acres again? Is it out by you?
No.
It's Liberty.
Oh.
Obviously, you need to spend more time up there.
We had, we had to have a.
I don't know, not never been invited to your family reunion before, but thanks.
So. All right, this next one, Sean, you may be interested in this one. So this one is one hundred thousand dollars to cover the cost of land acquisitions to improve an existing road. So this is Taylor.
What is it?
Brad Blanch, is that Taylor Manning?
Brad Blanch is Cherokee.
Cherokee, sorry. Okay, so we agreed that we would go and acquire several pieces of property and he would reimburse us for those.
Okay.
So we have some ongoing discussions, we use that word.
Yes.
And he's telling us right now until we can get our issues solved, he can't pay us. So what's gonna happen is this is gonna cross fiscal years. Now, we're gonna get the money back because he can't go forward with his development unless we
Correct.
get the money back.
Right.
But what's gonna happen is this is gonna cross fiscal years now. So whereas before we were just gonna be reimbursed out of the same budget, it'd be a wash. Now, I'm asking for a hundred thousand dollars to cover the cost of that, and then the reimbursement is going to come in in twenty twenty-two.
So he's not denying that he's gonna pay it.
Correct. He's just said until his development moves forward.
He can't go forward until we do.
Yeah.
I think we got, I got an nasty email from him over the weekend.
Commissioner Jenkins and I met with him just a few minutes ago. We're okay.
All right, okay.
So all been put to bed, Gage.
I didn't pay much attention to him, so.
And the last two items on this list you've already signed off on, it was the transfer of up to seven million dollars to capital projects from the county fund balance and up to one million dollars from the library fund balance. And basically what that is, is a placeholder. So anything over and around that minimum or maximum fund balance is gonna get swept into capital projects. I don't know what the amount is. I aimed a little high. I'd rather be higher than low. There's no consequence for overestimating, but there is one for underestimating. So that's what's on there. That's what I'm going to present tomorrow in the public hearing.
Okay.
Okay.
Great.
Unless you have any questions, that's all I have.
Which great to me. Good job, Scott. Great. So I do have something I need to talk to you while you're right here.
Okay.
It's in regards to the budgets. So the funds that we're getting these impact fee funds. So what's happening now is now that development is starting to take place, our impact fees aren't keeping up with it. For example, say, okay, for example, this is what it's about sewer, we need to raise our impact fees. No. What we did, we allowed these guys to come in and build that lower sewer, and we said we'd pay the difference, right, between fourteen feet and eighteen feet or twelve and eighteen, whatever it was. And that's all worked out great. We talked Scott into supplementing the impact fees a little bit if he had to, to make sure we were okay until we recollected them. Well, that's all great. Everything worked out good. No complaint. Well, the problem we've got now, we're, we got a second lift stations come into play. And it's time to do it again. Well, we don't have the money we had before.
Yeah, so what we did is we borrowed from one of the other impact fee funds. So we don't have any cash. We're gonna get it over the next, what, ten years?
I don't want to take that long.
Yeah.
They're growing pretty quick.
They're going.
Over a period of time.
Yeah, but when we, when I talked to you about this, I told you this was kind of like a one-time thing because we borrowed the money. We
Can't borrow it twice.
Can't borrow it twice. So depending on the cost of this new station, you know, I mean, if it's fifty thousand dollars, we could probably do it, but if it's five hundred thousand dollars, we're not gonna be able to, so.
Well, this is worse yet, because the other one was hundred fifty or sixty homes. Well, this one's about forty or forty-five, isn't it, Sean? Remember?
I don't remember the number.
Which one's this next one?
Is this Ed Grant subdivision?
Well, no, it's not. When you go out of elementary, the elementary school on nine fifty
South.
South. Yeah, nine fifty south, and you go west to forty-seven hundred, you drive right out into a field. Right there's a for sale sign, and that's the problem, right there.
Brad Blanch's old Cherokee estate property.
No, no, Brad's across the street from it.
The other side.
He's on the east side, and this is on the west side.
Why are we dealing with it? They haven't, they proposed a development or?
Yeah, they've, they're in and they wanna they're ready to go. And what we've told them is gee, this is great. You gotta build that thing at eighteen feet.
Yeah.
I mean, saying eighteen feet, I've only got forty-five homes. That's true. He's only got forty-five homes. And he said, you know, he says that kills the entire subdivision because it's a million and a half dollars more. Well, I know, I didn't suspect this would come up so quick. I thought this was a one and done deal, and soon as we started collecting, it'd take to catch up and away we'd go. This is out in the field. It's nowhere. Well.
Million and a half? Is the difference?
I don't know. I'd have to get into it, but it's
Okay.
It's about that, probably.
Okay.
You know, wow.
Just to go another few feet, million and a half bucks?
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
From fourteen to eight. Well, I thought we already put together a plan for that, over cert so many feet.
We did.
When we okayed this last.
Together. That, that isn't the issue. The issue is we don't have the money anymore.
Yeah. Yeah.
So we need to take some money out of our supplement that. The question I have, this is sewer related. Can we use ARPA on our own?
That's a good question. I'm not sure.
Sorry, say that question again.
Can we use ARPA?
Could you use county ARPA dollars for this? So I talked to Cortland and actually all the attorneys asking that same question as we were looking at the road improvements out on eighty-three hundred.
Right.
To see if that could be used and different things like that. And we think that it can.
Well, if road improvements can, then plumbing gotta be.
Well, and, and the reason is, is because even though unincorporated is a city, the county is allowed to match other city contributions. And so it makes sense that it would be able to match a, or participate with an incorporated area, just like you want a city. Yeah, so we think that it would be, now we gotta be careful as to how much money we have and what we want to use it for. But in this instance, so if we could use ARPA, you'd have to spend it. It's not a loan. And if we did that, I mean, the upper money's gone, and now all of a sudden, all these homes that are out there get this benefit, they're not paying for their service, right? So the next subdivision that connects.
They all still have to pay.
Yeah, can't we still, we could still use ARPA with the impact fee, couldn't we?
All this will do will, will supplement the deficit.
Yeah, but you're not gonna collect that impact fee for a long time, right? I mean, because we're telling it to put it down at eighteen feet because we're thinking of the next subdivision this time.
That's right.
So the next subdivision that comes in there not having to pay for that, because we've already paid for it with ARPA?
Well, what do we do?
Well, I, I'm just, I'm trying to make sure you understand what you're saying.
Yeah, you're absolutely right. That's what ended up happening. But you guys won't, you won't allow us to build a balance in there past five years. When I say you won't, the state won't. But you have to, and hold, hold our feet to the fire.
That's what we do.
And then, so that's where the impasse is, you know? And most cities can work around this, and ultimately I'm hoping within a short period of time, like this next summer sometime, we'll have that in a sewer district.
Yeah.
We do. And they'll, they'll start taking care of itself. But today, that doesn't, that isn't the case.
Well, and if it goes in a sewer district, who collects the impact fees?
Well, sewer district will start.
So we're putting out all the principal, and then we'll never get paid back.
And in this case, that might be the case. In this, this one, the other, the other one we did, I suspect if we put in a district, we'll make them pay that back too.
See, I don't know why we would give it to a district without some type of obligation back to us.
Yeah, the district obligation back to us.
I mean, we've got, I'd look at it the same as a bond, even though it's ARPA funds. It's like, we put this money out, you gotta pay us back. So other than I know that the ARPA funds aren't allowed to be paid back.
Yeah, so that's the problem is you can't use ARPA as your principal to loan and then collect all that money back.
Yeah.
These are, these, it's free money. You have to spend it essentially. You don't get to use it as a
But I don't, yeah. I agree. I think it has to go to this district. Maybe this is a gift to that district. I
I don't like the idea of a one and a half million dollars going to benefit forty-five homes. Well, won't benefit forty-five. It'll benefit, you know, for a mile in every direction.
Well, I, so if it's a mile in every direction, why, what's stopping us from saying, look, if you hook up to that list station, no matter where you are, you have an impact fee you have to pay to get into. I mean, if I hook up to a sewer line.
Yeah, you'd have the impact.
I'm gonna pay.
But that money's then gonna go into the impact fee fund and sit for five years. Well, we've already spent the money to cover that cost, so it's gonna sit there, and either I'm gonna have to find something else to do with it in five years, or it's gonna be the sewer district's problem.
Well, I, I, at the end of the day, I think it's a sewer district issue, but I'm just saying, but anybody that uses that system should pay sooner or later.
I mean, we could, if we wanted to not use the ARPA dollars, you could, we could try to loan the money through an intra-fund loan.
We talked into that once, and I don't wanna do it again. I feel like I'm going backwards on it.
Yeah, we wouldn't wanna do it for the impact fees. We would have to do it from the general fund, and the general fund can invest in another fund. But then if it, we transferred it to a special service district or sewer district.
It'd have to be paid back.
Yeah. But we're, we're doing an interfund loan, not with a third party. We're doing it with ourselves, and then we're giving that away. I mean, we'd have to work out the legalities of it.
But it makes us look suspect in the, in the federal's government's eye.
If they were to look at it, it would be like.
They'd say, what are you guys doing? Are you playing around with this?
Yeah.
Shell game. Yeah, and I don't want to be accused of that.
And he can't, the developer couldn't finance and get paid back with impact fees over ten years or fifteen years?
I don't know. It's too small. Yeah, it's too small. If it was a couple of hundred lots, the answer would be yes. And who knows when it gets going? You know how this stuff goes and multiplies. Sometimes a neighbor will come and say, look, my, my property's for sale now. But, you know, he backs up against the Gibson dairy. And so and, so, you know.
How do cities do this, Sean? Do they just use their, like, the sewer district would use its fund balance to cover?
Yeah, so Plain City has a sewer district, and our sewer district is in the positive every year, ten or twenty or thirty thousand dollars.
Thank you.
So over a four or five years, eight-year period, we get to a point where you've got a million dollars in there, and then we go out at that point and say, okay, our goal is to sewer the city. So then we pick a road that is pretty darn good. We figure everybody look up on it. We, we run a new sewer line down there and get them all to look up. And then we just, just perpetuate that. But frankly, in all the years we've done this, I think we've brought two roads into it. You know, it's politically, it's a hard thing to do, because when you decide to do this, half the people on the road are happy because their septic system's failing. And the other half are damn you. I just, I just put a new tank in, or I just, you know, I just had that pump last year. I'm good for five more years. And so when we do it out there, we just start charging them, saying, okay, look, you gotta start paying your fee a day, but you don't have to hook up for five years. And we give them a grace period, knowing that in many of their cases, they're okay. But they have to pay because they're officially there then. And then, and they, they're happy to do it because, you know, our fees are cheap at twenty bucks a month or fifteen, something like that. And, anyway, that's the way we do that, Scott.
If it's a million and a half, let me do some additional research and work to see what other options that we have.
Well, we just did that for the other.
Well, yeah, but it was like four hundred thousand, wasn't it?
Yeah, that was, that was three or four hundred thousand.
I think the difference was in that case, he had several hundred connected. And so
We had the potential for that many.
Well, no, the potential went all the way to seven hundred, I think.
Oh, it did?
Yeah, it was much bigger. But in his subdivision, he would do it.
Okay.
So he had a larger, I don't know, I don't remember.
Anyway, I'd like to see some options.
Okay, let me, let me go back and do some options on that and see what I can find. I'll talk to Chris too and see.
All right, I just wanted to bring that up because that just happened last week, and I was waiting to get a chance. And gee, we happen to be here right now.
What was that subdivision called? Do you know? Or do you know?
I can't answer that.
I can find out for you.
Okay.
But it's all forty, forty-seven hundred and nine fifty.
West side of forty-seven.
Yeah, west side.
Okay. Right.
And they're getting ready to approve it.
The planning commission?
Are they? So he's that far down the road?
Far down the road.
One acre lots?
I don't remember. I think they are, though. Yeah, in fact, I'm sure they are, because I asked the guy, I said, why are you going to one acre lots if you're gonna be on the sewer?
Yeah.
I said, we allow more density if you're on a sewer. And I don't remember his.
So was he right on forty-seven hundred?
Right on forty-seven hundred. Right across from nine fifth, when you come back from the elementary schools, drove right across the road, you drive right into it. That field. All right.
Okay, now you got us.
Don't worry about it. This is all good. Daniel, Ricky, have at it.
All right. This is a follow-up on our initial discussion a couple of weeks ago about the redistricting and the re-presincting process. Redistricting obviously is done by the state with a couple of exceptions, including voter, well, local school board, so Weaver School Board. But, and then it comes to the county, and we do the re-presincting, and that'll include your voter participation areas as well as the school board district boundaries. So we talked a fair amount about.
This is what you told us a week or ten days ago.
So now we're coming back. We made a couple of changes. So improvements, and Daniel's gonna go through the details.
Are we required to hold public hearings or anything?
No.
Okay.
So, Ms. Ricky said, this is, these are our final maps. And I'm just, first one, just give a shout out to Cameron Johnson with the GIS Department, people can GIS, because he's the one that I've been working with exclusively in getting these maps made. So these are the three responsibilities that the commission have, and creating new precincts, establishing the voter participation areas, and realigning the Weaver School Board district boundaries. So we'll start with the voter participation areas. Just a refresher, voter participation areas are only used for county initiatives or referenda. So anytime there's initiative or referenda, the sponsors are required to collect a certain number of signatures. And a percentage of those signatures must come from each of the voter participation areas. So that's what this is all about. So they need to be substantially equal in population, compact, and contiguous. This is a, so this, this is the population totals from the eight areas we came up to. So they are all fairly substantial, substantially equal population. When we first created these voter participation areas in two thousand and nineteen, it was the commissioner's desire to group, to create these areas by grouping cities together. And so with this redistricting, we followed that same principle. So for instance, area number one is the Ogden Valley, Huntsville, all of North Ogden, and Harrisville. Area eight is South Ogden, you went to Washington Terrace, and then we went to Highlands and Incorporated area. And then area five and six.
So why is it C? What's the CSU?
The issue, that'll come into play a little bit more when we talk about precincts.
All right.
So we just, we changed some of the precinct names. Area five and six are all within Ogden City. Area four is always in Raleigh. And then you also said that area seven was part of Ogden and Riverdale. But that's how, that's how these areas came about.
If it starts with C, that means it's an unincorporated.
Unincorporated. And so there's a map of our voter participation areas. That's how you can see it on.
So the only areas in here that you could really be judged harshly for would be areas like this, that they had a little eye, a little peninsula, or an area like that.
Hold on, I can't see what you're, so show me.
Say that again. An area like this, I see, or a little area like this that's stuck in there, or an area like that. All the rest is, you know, geographically pretty natural.
So actually, it's all pointed at.
Well, I see right there, you followed the railroad track into a road. So, yeah, so that makes sense. There, right there, you follow.
So this area right there, that, that should be shared area. So that's, that's just, that was just.
That layer right there?
So that's it.
Okay.
This is all due to the population. They have to be equal population.
Yeah.
And so if we put this with that, that, that population should hide, to put it down.
Sure, I understand. Nick Gage did this. You get to a point where you, it's like a balloon. You push a little here and this.
You can't follow those demographics of roads. You gotta base it on population. So you gotta make some adjustments somewhere.
When you get to a point, you follow it all right down to this, and when you get to that, you have to make a decision.
Okay, so that was, and area seven, that one is shaped that way because this is all of South Ogden City.
So that follows the city boundary.
So this is, this is Ogden City here, and then that's Riverdale.
Oh.
So that's why that looks at me.
Yeah, makes sense.
Yeah, your areas, your populations are darn poor. Yeah, that, that really was the most important thing for those populations.
Yeah, I don't have an issue with this.
Like I say, we got it.
Yeah.
I'm glad it was you drawing, not Megan.
I'm surprised he has hair now.
Yeah.
Oh.
I do a little on the face. As far as the school board district goes, again, they need to be substantially equal in population, compact, and contiguous. Over the port, over the course of this process, I've had a couple of conversations with the school districts, got some good feedback from them concerning what they wanted to see in their districts. First part of November, I did take two different options to them to look at, and the option that they preferred.
Was it, was this the board or the superintendent?
So that was, so it was actually with Superintendent Stevens, Robert Peterson from the administration, and also John Ritchie from the school board.
Okay, exactly. I got an email or a call from Jen Christensen, wanted to know who was doing this and how it was being done, and so.
Well, yeah, she's a board member.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But it sounded like she wanted to have more oversight in the maps. I said, talk to Superintendent Stevens.
And it actually was.
I'm amazed that they made a decision without at least getting the boards, okay?
Well, it's not their board's responsibility. It's the county commissioner's responsibility.
I understand that, but if you show enough respect to go to the superintendent, which you did, you'd think he'd have that same respect for his board members.
And, and I don't know that he did not do that.
Yeah, I, well, apparently didn't if she called him. He, he hadn't as of, when was it, last week sometime. I'm sure she got to the bottom of it.
That's okay.
The, the option that they chose is what is the basis for the final map that we had, and on Friday last week, I did send that final map to Superintendent Stevens, and he had, he had no objection to everything. So these are the population totals of the districts. So again, everything's right where it needs to be.
Very close, yeah.
And that's what the map looks like. And this map actually follows very, very closely to what it currently is.
Yeah, so that's not substantially different than what we've got right now.
And that was their choice. They did not want to deviate much from what they currently had. So all we did was just adjust boundaries to accommodate for the population. So I think the biggest difference was if you'd been District Five, which is Riverdale and Washington Terrace. For this one, we had to move that boundary over a little bit into Roy City just to accommodate, just to pick up unnecessary population.
So does this throw anybody out of the district?
Nobody's thrown out of their existing. All board members are still remain in their current district.
Same.
So no one's displaced.
That's gotta make them happy. That's probably why I didn't have it.
Exactly why.
And, and we did have that discussion. One, one of the options that I presented to them did actually move one of their board members out of the district. And that was, this is one of the reasons why we chose to go this way, to protect, to protect everyone.
What is the definition of substantially equal?
There isn't.
Okay.
Um, common, common practice around the country is that a five percent plus or minus deviation is acceptable. So that's, that's what we based this off of, but their bidding code, it just says substantially equal.
It's a good question. Not come working elections?
And, never mind.
Never mind.
All right.
And then the basis for all this is basically the precincts. So the requirement, co-requirements for precincts is they could, they have a maximum of twelve hundred and fifty registered voters. They can't cross city boundaries, and they can't cross state legislative boundaries. So we did meet all of the requirements with our precincts in that regard. Weaver County will now have one hundred and seventy-three precincts, that's nineteen more than we currently have. And that's basically due to population increase for the most part. We, we stayed with the precincty name to follow the city name that the precinct is located. Things that are NOG will be in North Ogden City, R I D is Riverdale City, et cetera, et cetera. The one modification we did was for all the unincorporated part of the county. So we did standardize that by starting all the precincts in unincorporated, we'll start with the letter C. And the next two letters will designate kind of where they are geographically. So COV is Ogden Valley. CSU would stand for the county, Southern Ogden, Umenta area. CWS is County West Side, so they're everything on the west side, et cetera. Just try to standardize some of that. So if you just look at the precinct map, you'll know, okay, that's unincorporated because it starts with the C. Because right now, we have so many incorporated that start with the W, some start with the T, some start with the P. It's kind of all over the place. So we just thought that this will help.
I like that.
Especially when we're approving ballots, it'd really help to see, people think those areas grew together.
Hundred and seventy-three precincts.
Hundred and seventy-three, yeah. We had, we had bringing that down quite a bit, but the legislature didn't cooperate with us, so. What we, what we had originally proposed is we wanted to be able to create our precincts just based on population, as everything else is, instead of voters.
Yeah.
But the legislature did not go along with that idea. They wanted to stay voters. So that's why we had to give it. So as the population increases, the number of voters in precinct has not increased. So that's the only, the only option we have is to increase the number of precincts, overall precincts with that. Just bring up C.
So when it comes to cities, you had to keep those precincts as much as possible in those cities.
They have to be in the city.
Right.
They, they can't go out.
Okay.
We don't, we don't have an option of that at all.
Well, okay, then.
So this is just an overall map of all the precincts in Weaver County. I don't know how detailed you would like to be with this. Do you want to just go by through each city? Want to just take a random look at some of the different areas? I will follow your lead.
You think we got anybody on the island?
A hundred more.
We know that.
Well, if we are, we're in hope of.
Yeah.
Two hundred and seventy-two.
A couple of the cities that kind of got chopped up a little more than normal, or last time anyways, Pleasant View and Marion Slatorville.
So let's actually, let's, yeah, let's just kind of go into some of those areas, and I can show you kind of what happened with. So here's Pleasant View. So if you recall from our last conversation, Pleasant View was divided amongst three different house districts and two different senate districts. So this precinct right here, Pleasant View Three, that's in a separate house and senate district than the rest of Pleasant. This one right here, that's in a different senate and house district than the rest of Pleasant View. This is in a different senate and house district than the rest of Pleasant View. So that's why these little precincts here had to be created. And you, and Pleasant View has ended up with eleven precincts now, where they currently have only six. But it's, but it's because of the way the legislature boundaries were drawn.
Yep.
So we really had no, we hadn't, didn't have much of an option with that. And then Marriott Slatorville is the other. So we've got these four precincts in Marriott Slatorville. Here we have a, here we have a precinct that only has five voters. And the reason why we could not, and the reason why is because this is in a different senate and house district than the rest of the city. Because they use twenty, twelve hundred south as a boundary for the house district, and they use the freeway as a district between the senate districts. Slatorville could have very easily just been two precincts. But we had to add these additional two because of the way that alleged district boundaries were drawn.
So there's only five of that one?
There's five people in it.
Well, and every time you get little weird things like that, almost every county has that kind of situation. And it's unfortunate, but
Yeah.
we can't, couldn't catch it all in, yeah, in time for the legislature to fix it.
And then we also, another area that I just wanted to, we have talked about in our last work session is when it comes to the special service districts that hold elections, we, with your, with your approval, we decided to create precincts when necessary that were based strictly off of the water district, or this water or the sewer districts. So that all of the people, so that all the voters in, in the precinct would get the same ballot. So here we have a water district. This is, I think, the Taylor Water District. And you'll see these two little boxes right over here. These are actually part of West Haven City that were drawn in a completely different house and senate district than the rest of West Haven, which is below it. So we had two choices. We could either make this its own precinct, or we could take these two little parcels and combine it with this larger precinct. Now we have three hundred and eleven voters rather than having only three, if we just went the small round. So it does create an island. It does jump, but that is the whole reason why. This is also an area that's seen a lot of annexation from, and incorporated into West Haven City. So we do anticipate over the next couple of years, a lot of this is gonna fill in and just eventually reach into, into that precinct itself. There at those lines. And then I will show you also, and then also to that, to that point with, again, the the water district grounds we did. the water district grounds, we did have this one issue in Roy City. So Roy Ten, you'll see this is oddly shaped. This is all part of Hooper Water District, and the rest of Roy is not in Hooper Water. So that's why we again created this oddly shaped precinct, so that all of these voters in Roy Ten are within the Hooper Water District, and they will all receive the same ballot as everybody else in the precinct. And then you have sixteen precinct, sixteen, which is surrounded by it.
So Gage, from a, uh, a representative's point of view, or a politician's point of view, would they say we gerrymandered that? I mean, literally, when you look at it, there's just a little string right there that keeps them together and all, and that they. I I don't see where there's any po- political willpower either way on.
You've got substantiation because if you say you're, you're basing that on giving a water district.
Yes.
So I don't think you could say you gerrymandered, gerrymandered because of the, we're consistent with the water district. So you're putting the same voters in the same precinct. So I don't, I don't, I don't see any issue with that. In fact, if if you didn't do it that way, how do you make sure that the people in the water district get the correct ballot?
So how, I I can, I actually can show you exactly how we do that, because we actually have.
I was trying to play devil's advocate a little there.
Yeah.
You know?
Well, and and whether they're in separate precincts or the same, they're still gonna have the same elected representatives.
Right.
Yeah.
So it's really, it's really an administrative company.
Yeah, we're not, we're not trying to change up legislatures, so Democrat, Republican here.
The alternative to that is what we've done here in Hooper Thirty-One. So Hooper Thirty-One, we have these three areas that are highlighted in red. So actually, so all of Hooper Thirty-One is in the Hooper Water Improvement District. These three pockets are not in the Hooper Water Improvement District. So, but there's not enough voters, and there's really nothing else to put these with. So what we, so what we create is a sub precinct. So here we have Hooper Thirty-One, and then this is Hooper Thirty-One dash X. So if the Hooper Water District has an election, we just omit these three or four people from receiving that ballot.
That answered my question, yeah.
So that, that's the alternative. Currently, in the current way that our precincts were assigned, we actually have thirty-seven sub precincts. But because we've been able to consolidate these now, we now only end up with six sub precincts. We've been able to create more precincts based just off of those water districts.
Like you did in Roy.
Like you did in Roy. So we greatly reduced the number of these subs.
To me, that's a better way to go.
Yeah.
Than having.
Well, I think you've done a marvelous job there.
Thank you.
The the additional benefit of what they did is.
No, I like that. It's a lot of work.
It simplifies the, the proofing and programming ballots, which could be, if you mess up a ballot, I'm all favor of this.
That's a big problem.
I think they've done a good job, and it's very defensible.
Yeah, yeah, no. Appreciate the hard work.
Let's do that.
This is, that's not an easy job, drawing this map.
Well, and it's tedious to, to the street.
Yeah, and especially at this level where you go down the.
In the house.
It's easy when you're just talking Senator House Districts, for a certain area, but now you gotta get the weeds here.
So, uh, we're really not looking for a, uh,
Motion?
A motion here, are we?
No, that'll be tomorrow. So tomorrow we have an official motion.
That's good. I'm all.
So if I may ask for tomorrow, how detailed do you want that presentation to be? Do you want this PowerPoint begin tomorrow? Should we do that? Just a verbal discussion where we talk about what the requirements are.
I'd like the PowerPoint. The reason is, is because with the detail and the work that you've done, it's defensible. You've got the maps up, and then people can go back and watch anytime if they want to view it.
Yeah, and these, and all of these maps will be on our, on the elections website by tomorrow.
I'd also like you to say, please refer to this site and and do some watermark. Refer to this site for future details. So as it's recorded, if people go to a YouTube video six months from now, they'll be able to see that watermark or something. So throw a slide in there that says, go to this website, find it.
And and actually, and I do have that, actually.
Plus, I think it's only fair to you that we allow you to spend fifteen or twenty minutes on this.
Yeah.
Does that represent hundreds and hundreds of hours?
Well, yeah, after all this time, if you want me to. I can do it in five minutes, I can do it in a half hour, however detailed you want to be.
I don't know if it needs to be terribly detailed, but you do want people to understand this.
Yeah.
So basic understanding, so they all go, wow, this is cool.
Yeah, this is why you do what you, I think it's great.
Yeah. Very good.
Thank you.
Right.
Great work.
Heavy rescue.
So Commissioner stated that subdivision is called Ali Farms, A L I Farms, and it's a cluster subdivision.
Oh.
So.
Is that possible?
That's the one.
That's not one acre lots.
If, if the density is based on one acre, they can get a little bit of a bonus, but the ones will actually be smaller than an acre of open space.
Yeah.
So, so you remember, did you get, how many blocks?
Uh, he said thirty-one.
Yeah, I was thinking thirty-four, but. Christie, if you'll send in Jason Horn and Lisa Schwartz, please. So you can see exactly why we're asking this, Scott.
Yeah.
I mean, thirty-one lots, when we begin to, we barely paid for a toll of it.
Yeah, that's a tough one.
Sean's budget's got lots of money, we'll just.
Let's find, we would turn that on, Scott.
Arm, I followed your lead today. Went with wild socks.
That's what?
Wow, super. Yeah. You've got some purple socks on.
I got my purples, yeah.
So I got some wife gave me one of these lands that were a little Disney.
Oh, you should wear those.
I did.
I'm surprised you don't have some. No, I want, I need to buy some socks.
Well, let me know when you are.
Come on up to the table.
I thought I was benched. Or benched.
Commissioners, we're gonna move on. Our item number two is a paramedic heavy rescue discussion. This, uh, the presenters are Scott Park, Jason Horn, and Lisa Schwartz. Welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Park, you're listed first. Go ahead.
Do you want to go first? Either way, I mean, that paragraph that you spit off this morning was perfect. So Commissioner Jenkins, if you recall, this is what, oh, maybe a year ago, close to a year ago, we talked about what we were going to do with the paramedic department, and currently it, well, previously it lived under human cer- or human resources, administrative services. It didn't really make much sense administratively to have it there. So then we kind of had it in this mezzanine section for the last year or so where Jason and I are are over it, but not really over it, if that makes sense. I don't have the technical expertise, but I get an invoice to know if they needed that piece of equipment or not. I just, I just make sure that the total matches the amount they're requesting.
Well, I told Jason here a year or so, or a half year ago, few months, I felt like he, that shouldn't be the case. It should be on one, under the, one of the commissioners' portfolios.
Yeah, and so what we had talked about at the time was moving it under emergency services. Uh, we did not have an emergency services director at that time, so there wasn't really anywhere to move it to. Lance was on his way out. And so now we do have an emergency services director, and so the proposal would be to transfer the administrative control of the paramedics fund to uh, emergency services. Am I saying it right? Not security, right? Emergency management, yeah, sorry. Um, now, Jason and I would still be involved on a supportive basis. I mean, I'm still going to review budget actions like I do for every department, and Jason would still be involved in purchasing like he is with every department.
Well, and I want Jason involved with that. In the past, they've bought this outside of our purchasing, and I think that's wrong.
For sure.
So I absolutely want Jason involved with that.
And we've set up the budget going forward next year, so it's down to the individual detailed line items of that contract. So we have a budget for training, and we have a budget for equipment and a budget for all the different stipends and things of that nature, just as they're outlined in the contracts. We'll be able to track that down to essentially the paragraph in the contract that it relates to. Uh, but what we would do is any invoices that come in, they would go to emergency services for their review and their approval. Did I miss anything? Do you guys want to add?
No, I think that's it. The only thing I was gonna add is that we met ahead of time, just to kind of give all the information, both with Eli and Eli. And we found out pretty quickly that what we had discussed that six plus months ago was absolutely correct. I mean, these two are both a lot more familiar with it. I mean, just the acronyms alone, um, to speak that language. And so that was, that proved to be pretty beneficial.
With the brain in the room. I know, I see the, I see the amazement on your face. You know, I gotta tell you, with that handsome face scrub, I didn't recognize you coming in here.
You didn't recognize?
And there we go. I looked down there and thought, well, look at what we got right here.
It's going great.
It's a little salt with the pepper.
Uh-huh, there's a lot of pepper left on the table, unfortunately.
How are you, Eli? Good to see you. And Commissioners, this Eli is just fantastic. This guy's wonderful. Boy, can he hit the golf ball.
Really?
Get him on your team.
Man. Holy max. Are you saying drags his knuckles?
Might as well.
Might the same way I hit the driver, three hundred yards off the.
Well, this sounds great.
Yeah, I think that makes sense. This is what we've been trying to do for the last six months.
I think it shows the level of.
Makes sense.
Confidence in what you're doing, and it's the right thing to do. We're. Do you have any questions?
No, I'm all favorable.
Commissioner, you got any questions?
No, I'll just throw in one thing really quick. I mean, when Eli and Mr. First looked at this contract, there were some questions about what happens when we get future grant dollars, and are we going to be supplanting existing county resources? Um, and I think that will, that's a very good concern, and we'll watch as new grant money comes in, because our goal was to get new grant money to help us pay for the heavy rescue. And and as long as the county continues to fund its existing contribution, we don't have any issues with supplanting, but if we decide we want to pull back with the county's putting in in terms of county dollars and replace it with federal dollars, then there could be a potential supplanting issue there. So we'll, we'll have to discuss that when we get any new grants.
Remember when we talked about doing this? Number one, the paramedic fund did have a little extra money, but everybody's concern was if they didn't want heavy rescue taking their money. We put it in there kind of as a area of, uh, to put it, and an area that could handle the, the impact immediately. But the heavy rescue was supposed to, uh, take care of itself as much as it could too.
Well, and that, and that's the, the question is if we start, uh, accepting a whole bunch of grants, and then we scale back the county contribution. We'll have to make sure with any federal grant, before we, before we pull back any county contributions, that that grant is okay with us, so that there's not a supplanting issue. Because what we don't want to do is have a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar award come in, and then we say, oh, that's great, we're gonna pull back two hundred and fifty thousand dollars of county dollars, and have the grant come back and say, wait a minute, you just used our money to supplant county dollars. So we'll watch for that.
We've heard, there's, there's another, uh, ask on its way for a paramedic, uh, unit.
Northview?
Is it Northview?
Yeah.
And so, uh, this is something you guys are gonna have to get into and.
There needs to be a, we, we talked about, uh, putting a little money out from this budget to, uh, doing a study, and I've already had a conversation with Chief Matthew about doing that. Yeah, about doing a study to see, i- is it Northview that really needs it? Do we need one at all? And if so, where does it go? Or do we, how does that work out? You know, north, southeast, or west, what's the best way to have that done? So that's, uh.
That was included in the twenty twenty-two budget, so.
Right, yeah.
It will be fun.
But I think one of us commissioners ought to be on that group, maybe even two of us, I don't care. I, we think different than firemen think. Firemen are weird guys. They think specific ways. Well, they do. You know, they're a little bit of, uh, equipment junkies.
They are.
But, uh, uh, I think, uh, I want to make sure that one or two of us, the commissioners involved.
I think there ought to be two in this particular circumstance. What do you think?
Yeah, I think that's good.
Well, and and if I may, just to kind of, um, my concern in, in reviewing when we met with Scott and, and my concern in reviewing the M O U that's been signed. And I agree that, that as far as departmental mission, that the, the idea that that the budget, the budget for this falls within the mission of, of, of our department. Um, my concern, and I brought it up to Scott, was traditionally, um, specifically, the, the, the paramedic fund was a standalone fund that we've now included the heavy rescue into, which have traditionally been wholly, um, funded through, uh, the S H S P, uh, Federal Homeland Security Grant.
Right.
Um, the specifics of that, there, the, that grant is extremely restrictive in how those monies can be used. Um, and and my, my, my point that I made to, to Scott and Jason when we reviewed this a few weeks ago is the county has put itself basically on, on record as funding heavy rescue within Weaver County for two hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars. So any of the S H S P funding that would have gone to the departments participating in the heavy rescue program in Weaver County, those funds are no longer available to those departments until the county funding has been exhausted. The S H S P funds can only be used to enhance or to build on an existing program or maintaining program that would not be funded otherwise. So now that we've told these guys that we're funding and have on paper that we're funding this program for two hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars, the county is on the hook for that. We can't spend S H S P funds to supplement that program. And my concern when it came to billing was the controls in place to make sure that these departments aren't double billing, that they're adhering to what they would need to adhere to in order to receive that funding through S H S P, to get that saved, that the controls are in place to get that funding through the county are similar, so that if we do in fact exhaust the money and come back to reimburse for S H S P, that the, the, the specific, um, benchmarks or the specific, uh, rules of that S H S P funding have been maintained throughout that expenditure with the county dollars, so that S H S P can't come back and say, we cannot, you know, supplement, or we, we cannot enhance or bill on that program because you have not followed the rules of using the money to begin with. So I, I was concerned about the controls in place as far as how the money is being spent, how the money is being tracked, and front-loading the, the, the information that the departments are required to do prior to conducting um, any type of training, if they're going to go through S H S P for that funding, there are certain paperwork and, and forms that need to be filled out for to make sure that you're complying with the rules of S H S P. I just wanted to make sure, my concern was that those controls don't exist in the document. And that we, it, when we do, uh, take this, this over budgetarily, that those controls remain in place, that we're not just doing an only, only oxen free or free for all for these departments, because there's money sitting there and they can spend it any way they want.
I agree with that. Questions?
Nope, I think we're good.
Questions?
That's great.
Okay, let's move forward.
Okay. I don't know if that requires an administrative change or administrative action on your part. I think you guys just decided what your portfolios are, right? There's no formal action you take on that?
And it's now in progress, isn't it?
Rather, yeah.
Sheriff, so. Yeah, I'm okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Dave, take it over. That's great.
Okay.
But let's put, I'd like to get a couple people, a couple commissioners on that committee, on there too, to give you a little more.
Yeah, yeah, that's great.
How much involvement do you want? Do you just want to see the emails, whether you're replying to them or not?
I'd like to see all the emails, yeah.
Okay, and then obviously there's stuff before the budget is actually.
Whoever else wants to be part of that chain.
Yeah, we're really not involved in the operations, like we are in other areas. So it really comes right down to purchasing, Gage.
Yeah, it does.
At least, Eli, we're trusting you.
Well, I think it's a big job, you know, just making sure that, um, when they spend their money or when they're submitting their receipts, that we know what, what they're doing, and we know what it's for, and that we keep track of that.
This is a, this is a big thing for the county. As you know, it's been under, well, it was under Brad D for all those years. And this is a big deal. One of the things that I hope stays in place is through the contract with paramedics, they provide free services out to our culture parks and recreation departments for the fair and for all the events out there, and I'd like to keep that going there, because that could be a substantial increase to cost of budget for that piece. And so that, I want to make sure that that's always, that's super important.
Now, you just said something. I want to make sure of this.
Okay.
We're not including this with the sheriff. The fact it's in Gage's portfolio, they're still separate.
Well, Lisa reports to the sheriff. So that's the, you know, we did that.
Yeah, that's true.
So she reports to the sheriff.
Yeah. So you just started, as you're like, you turn and you start to, you started, right?
I think we did.
Yeah, remember? Yeah, so sheriff's office administers this.
Yeah, I'd like you, when you leave here too, make sure there's a wheel chart, an organizational chart that we passed out. Well, no, we're actually gonna pass it out tomorrow at our, our meeting. So just make sure if there's some corrections, we'll need to make sure that you get with Stacy, if she's not here, just make sure that, that the organizational chart flows the way it should. And Stacy's scheme can help you with that.
Yeah, well, when you walk out, Shelley will have you out there. If Stacy's here.
Did it change?
Well, nothing's really changed, because emergency services is still under the same.
Yeah, that's all.
Yeah, there's gonna be a little tweak to it with this, and that's okay.
Yeah, okay.
Did it change? There's a lot of things that's changed that we'll get tomorrow.
Just from a couple weeks ago, it changed?
Uh, some fine tuning, yeah. Yeah, there are. We tweaked it from two, two and a half weeks ago. We, remember, we did that in our, yeah, so.
Do you have any questions?
No.
Um, just as far as the, the question that I would have, just as far as that process, the flow, uh, that paperwork workflow that goes from the departments through us, through Jason and, and the. Um, just as far as the, the question that I would have, just as far as that process, the flow, uh, that paperwork workflow that goes from the departments through us, through Jason and, and the Wonder Twins here. Just the, the, the uh, the paperwork.
Remember Zan and Jane?
Hey, I, I just want to make sure that if we were to, to implement kind of a formalized process of what that, what that workflow looks like as far as forms, documents, or submitting, or um accounting for, or um tracking the who's involved, what's being purchased, whether it's complying or not comply, complies or not complies, not just again with, with county purchasing policy, but making sure we're not going to run afoul of SHSP or federal grant dollars. Um, so if we were to implement a kind of a, a basic packet, workflow packet for those departments to push it out to them that in the event that you guys are, are requesting for reimbursement from the paramedic fund, here's the documents that you're going to have to, here's the, you're going to have to jump through that we're going to need for documentation.
So I think, I don't. I just can say, I think we discussed part of this. So again, yeah, give me an acronym, SHY.
SHSP.
Yeah, SHSP. So I think with that sort of thing, I think that approval flow will go strictly through you because you understand it and you'll know what to watch for. But we, we discussed, and correct me if I'm wrong, the six or eight months ago, because the county is funding this program, then it adheres to the procurement process and flow that's already established, right? So they'll still have to follow all of the, and, and they actually do. I've had to, to stop them a couple times because of the thresholds.
Well, and, and again, some of my concern where we're beginning to kind of melt death, um, when we're talking about the equipment that has been purchased by the county in the past, existing equipment that they have in their firehouses versus equipment that's been funded through those federal grant dollars. If they're using that money to maintain or, or, or that type of thing, that we have that clear delineation that this is these are regional assets, this is purchased with regional federal dollars, these are county assets purchased in county dollars. So that we're not mixing that money and making sure the county dollars are paying to maintain regional equipment. We're not using region money to pay for or maintain county equipment. I think that's where we'll get in trouble as far as, as far as the, 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 the accounting and when it comes time for audits and things like that with the, with the federal grant dollars, the county dollars, we start. We, we make sure there's a very clear line between what's what in that, in that process. We don't run afoul of being accused of mixing dollars together and using county funds to pay for regional equipment and using regional funds to pay for county equipment.
Once they've received the regional funds, is that property theirs forever? So for example, if they purchase something with the regional funds and then they surplus it. Then those checks will sometimes get written to us and I have never asked the question if it's coming from regional or county.
Again, in the event that they surplus it, there is a very formal process that they need to jump through with DHS FEMA to get permission to surplus it. And those dollars can then only be used from that surplus for very specific that, like I said, the, the paramedic stuff has always been self-maintaining that little piece with the heavy rescue. Now we're, brings in the, the possibility of starting to kind of merge and create some gray areas between those two funding streams that could potentially, I mean, if it were, were bad enough, could potentially bar the county or other counties within the region from receiving federal grant.
I, I think this is low risk to the county, as we've discussed.
Yeah, I do too.
This is, this would be Riverdale's issue, not Weaver County's issue. We just need to make sure that our grants that we're reimbursing appropriately. If Riverdale doesn't have good enough controls to, to document what's a county asset versus another asset, that's, that would fall back on Riverdale and Riverdale would be responsible for the question costs. So would Ogden City or South Ogden, whoever's participating in this. So while we do want to be aware of that risk and I think through the reimbursement request, we can make sure that there's nothing blatantly obvious, but I think it's low risk because, yeah, we can ask the question, but I don't think we want to try to be responsible for South Ogden City's business processes. I think we want to draw a line there to say, look, this is on you. If you mess up, that's on you. You've got to be responsible for paying back any question costs.
I, I would agree with that and liability, but just understand that the consequences could be regionally felt. Because it's a regional um allocation, it's a regional project. Therefore, if, even if it's some of, you know, a different entity and it's South Ogden, whoever that has the issue, it still reflects on the count, on the regional.
He says regional problem. You're talking about heavy rescue?
We're talking about um any funding that SHSP goes towards.
Funding, but not heavy rescue.
But, but that's the same risk we have now, right? It's no different than today because they have all these grants.
Yeah, this, this doesn't change anything that we're dealing with right now. If South Ogden or Riverdale screws up now, it's still. Right?
That's true.
Right, but like I said, now that we're just intermingling that new piece of the, of the wholly dedicated county funds. Like I said, I, I think that as long as we can establish a process that just draws that line and makes a very clear definition of, of what that line is between county versus regional assets and equipment, I think we're good. But I, as long as we have those controls in place, I don't think we'll have an issue.
Well, let me ask you, you bring this up. Let me ask a question now. Who owns that truck that you just bought?
If it was paid for with county funds, the county owns it unless you have.
Well, it came out of uh the heavy rescue fund.
No, Weaver County Corporation owns that vehicle.
Yeah, okay. I just want to make sure of that. I assume that was where it was, but all this, all of a sudden you got the question.
Well, and, and like I said, my concern is, is that Weaver County Corporation owns that vehicle's purchased with county funds. Now somewhere down the road, um, Riverdale Fire, whoever is responsible for maintaining that piece of equipment now reaches out uh to the region and requests an allotment for regional funds to maintain or, or upgrade or make some repairs on that vehicle. That would be, that would be a textbook case of supplanting county funds with SHSP dollars, which wouldn't be allowed. That's why I'm saying that, that clear line of this is a county piece of equipment, this is a regional piece of equipment. Making sure we're not mixing funds using county dollars to maintain a regional piece of equipment or using regional funds to maintain a county piece of equipment where a, a, and not saying it would fall back on the county, but it would create that gray area where people would have the opportunity to start making accusations, which I think would be bad.
Well, people are going to make accusations anyway. Like my buddy Rick Rasmussen. You know him?
I've heard the names. I think he likes you.
He likes me.
There's a sign with your name on it.
Okay, anything else? And let's continue to move forward. I appreciate it.
Thanks, thanks Lisa.
Commissioners, we're going to move on to item number three, which is a discussion regarding the GSCC Fairgrounds land layout. Jennifer, Marty, Duncan, Stephanie and Scott Park. Please come in. Sorry, we're running a little slightly behind. Shelley? Can you come in and help Marty with an HDMI thing here?
Sorry, yeah, that was.
How are you? Good.
Do you have any?
We only bought ten free ones.
So just make yourself a note.
I think we get ten free ones.
One free what?
Tickets to Bull Wars.
Jennifer, I was going to tell you, we took my kids to a hockey game on Friday.
Didn't you enjoy it?
It was eight to one. I've never seen a hockey game so exciting. Towards the end of the third period, I suspect, fight it broke out and everybody started cheering and screaming for it. And my kids, my children, kids, they just kind of looked horrified. They're like, that guy's not moving on the ground. Why is everybody cheering? I thought, this is hockey, this is blood sport.
It's a blood sport, you're right, Scott.
Yeah, they sure enjoyed it.
Was it a Weaver State game?
No, it was the Mustangs, Mustangs.
Yeah, they do a really good uh atmosphere type, you know.
Shelley, or Christie, what's the?
Yeah, do that, Marty.
Do you have it on your? Here, Marty. I've got it right here.
Yeah, I, I can just email.
It should be on your calendar.
She just have a.
Should have a, yeah, just a passcode there. Yeah, just do nine eight eight.
I gotta get the link though. The link is not in my calendar right here. Should be in there, right?
Yeah, should be.
If you go to. So um, I just did a quick and dirty.
Oh, really?
I just.
Oh, okay.
I don't know. It's not good, really. Thanks. We get flowers or something.
Send an email.
She sent you an email that you can just pick on the link.
That'll be easier.
Yeah.
Jen, okay. I want to share the spreadsheet first or the setting up.
Let's start with the spreadsheet.
Be in that same, you know, is it?
With what?
Okay. Who's going to lead the discussion today? Mr. Smith?
Do you want me on the other commissioner?
I'd be satisfied.
Well, this is land though and it's in that, Stephanie here, it might be in his portfolio. Just hold for just another second. There he is. See, I told you. Literally one second.
Anybody else coming?
No.
So commissioners, we met with, uh, as we told you, Aaron Osted, employer. They just uh told us that they would go ahead and crunch numbers just for all of our benefit, uh, kind of what it would look like to, what the, what the land is worth, what future tax revenues might possibly be. And uh they just did that out of the kindness of their heart. So uh it's important to note, Boyer has said that they, they aren't pushing necessarily to take any more land that would be on the Fairgrounds land, but they, they went ahead and did this for us. They're open to it if we're open to it. So um let Jen talk about this spreadsheet uh a little bit and what they found.
Who did this?
Boyer.
Boyer.
Out of BDO.
So Marty, can you go over column A? So what they've kind of done is they've kind of basically said if they were to take over the Fairgrounds, the entire footprint, they would have an eight-year build out. And so they've got some of their different um facts that they use here, their lease rate, their year, yearly interest rate, the term. And then they just kind of built it down based on a seventy-year uh lifespan. So then Marty, can you kind of go over here a little bit more? They are, they are talking about some TIF funds and uh I don't know a whole lot about that, but, but basically they're asking for the first twenty years to be covered by the property tax that they estimate would come in based off of that square.
So what rate are they asking for?
Hundred percent.
Oh.
Hundred percent?
Hundred percent increments what they ask.
We don't do a hundred percent.
We don't. And there's no reason, if you look at their numbers at their bottom, then I have another, I have a, a big conceptual issue with the way they did the spreadsheet, but even adjusting for that, they're making tons of money. There's no, there's no reason for tax incentive.
Say, yeah.
They're so full that they need more space. They don't, there's no need for an incentive at all.
No.
You're saying there's no, no reason to do the incentive because it's so successful?
Yeah, why would we need them to continue to be so successful?
I know why they asked for it because we're two government entities and we can do it. That's why.
I mean, they're looking at.
Well, we can say what it is.
I don't why they're.
That's money in Ogden City's pockets, what it does.
Well, does.
But back to that commissioner, if you remember the discussion we had before, the only way that would be feasible for us to do anything out of the Fairgrounds would be to take Ogden City's part, or at least in part of that money to pay for a bond or a, you know, right?
That's not the lease rate. That's not the TIF. You're talking two different things.
Well, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I'm opposed to any TIF. Now, the lease rate with Ogden City is a different discussion.
Yeah, I mean, they're showing a net profit of, and this again is seventy years, almost two point seven billion. Uh, that county property tax at three hundred sixty-two million less than forty-three point seven that they want to keep in TIF.
So if I, and I, I need to jump in on this.
No, you go right ahead.
Their assumption is wrong because they think that property tax revenue goes up two and a half percent every year. And what happens is after year eight, when the property's built, they only get new revenue if there's new build out.
There's new growth.
So they don't capture any new appreciation value. So I actually went in there and after year eight, I said, okay, your tax rate is fixed. It drops it down to about a hundred and thirty-two million in property tax, so it cuts it in a third. Um, and their, but their profit's still seven hundred million dollars.
Yeah.
So, so big difference, but.
And then if you come over here just a little bit more, Marty, where they talk about the, um, so what they kind of did is they just threw in some rough numbers of what they think our buildings are, are improvements are worth. This is not the land, just the improvement of the land. And they're showing it would be about sixty, about sixty million to replace our, our, our build out plus the cost of the land if they were to take over um what we have. These are really rough estimates. In fact, I don't think like Marty didn't think two hundred uh dollars per square foot was enough for the arena, right?
Yeah, I mean, the, the conference center came in at four hundred and fifty a square foot. Now, an arena is not a conference center, but I think two hundred is low. That's just.
Not much you can build a day for under two fifty.
Right.
So, you know, some of that would need to be played with.
Building.
Yeah.
As well. Well, and then that goes back.
An interior finish.
Well, yeah, I mean, we're talking seats, video boards.
Electronics.
You may want some plumbing electrical in there. A little.
Concessions, et cetera.
Yeah, I think, I think you're probably half it.
So I think.
I think you're half these half.
You know, and this, this spreadsheet, like Scott is able to play with this, you know, and they, and they recognize that this is just a real rough thought. Some of you guys kind of know what we're talking about with some of the possibilities might be. Because if they take away our parking, it doesn't mean we have to relocate the Fairgrounds. It just means we either need to reconfigure the current Fairgrounds or look at some sort of option like this, so.
But I just looked at the numbers really quick. So sixty million dollars, if you say that's half, I, I rounded it up to a hundred million dollars to include some land. Hundred million dollars, if you take what their property tax revenue is for everything, school, district, county and city, a hundred and thirty-two million back out the thirty-three million they wanted in increment, that's a hundred million dollars. So it would take us seven years if we captured a hundred percent of everybody's property tax just to cover the cost of this movement, let alone any operations, so.
Scott, what about half of the rent share or half of the?
Well, we'd have to do some type of, we'd have to.
We would have to, right?
Yeah.
We would have to.
Yeah.
Yeah, some sort of profit split. Right now, they're splitting it, Ogden City and Boyer fifty-fifty. So we, we would have to look at either us taking on some of Ogden City's portion or.
Are they, did they put any of that in or is it, is it still fifty-fifty?
They did not consider that as part of this spreadsheet.
Yeah.
Okay.
It, it's a really rough spreadsheet. I mean, and I get it, just high level ballpark, that's still something on the wall to see what it is.
Right.
It just need a lot of refinement before we even started to try to make high level decisions as to what we wanted to go.
I don't, I'm looking, I see a golden spike there. I see shed. Maybe that stalls. I don't, to me, this is uh not everything that the Fairgrounds is included there, way off. You can relocate some panels and.
So they've kind of grouped. They both, they, they both, like the arenas, Jim, I believe that's both of the arenas. And then the open steel is all of the. And then the open steel is all of the barns. They've just grouped the complete square footage, not each individual building.
Our golden spike is about a hundred and fifteen, isn't it, with everything? Riding arena's about sixty, forty, I mean, forty.
I don't.
Anyway.
Yeah, I don't think that the riding, a golden spike's a hundred and fifteen, if I'm just comparing it to the twenty-one thousand dollar rec hall, I'm just looking at, thinking about the, um, yeah, the footprint in the satellite view, I can't think that it's five times as large as the rec hall.
Well, um, you, you be time square footage, so we get the amazening, we get to count it a couple of times, but.
Yeah, but again, that.
Does it even, does it?
No, but what they did, Jim, is they just pulled up Google Earth and they just, they just got measurements from the roof line.
But there are some expenses in an arena build.
Yeah.
It, it's not just an open building.
Yeah, it's. So they're, they're saying the sixty million is our replacement cost.
Mm-hmm. Of the deal plus land.
Rec centers, if you're talking about. No. Well, I would think maybe that's another steel, they're twenty-one, twenty thousand square feet.
So I think that.
Sir, they're actually heated in their condition.
The open steel, Jim, I, that's the barns, I believe.
Yeah, so where's the? Rec exhibit halls.
Those might be the specialty.
And fifty bucks a foot?
They might, yeah.
Were you able to put? You could do something for sixty million, but you wouldn't replace that anywhere close to sixty.
No.
I agree.
You're talking, you're talking about kitchens and concession stands, uh.
I think you doubled or triple that. Well, it, it looks to me like they're just trying to be, you know, trying to be super careful on their, to benefit their side. Oh, yeah. This isn't close, in my mind, no. Well, and this doesn't include any dirt.
Correct.
Right, right, no land.
Doesn't, it doesn't include dirt nor does it include the, even the question of what is there even available? Like, is there even any hundred and fifty acre parcels out there that would be zoned correctly for the replacement of the golden spike?
Well, the answer to that is yes, but are they at a location that we want that at?
Well, for a hundred and fifty acres like this, I'm almost, we got one direction only, that's west.
Yeah.
We don't have another direction.
Exactly. What's, uh, what is that right there you've got?
That's just kind of their quick and dirty, um, they find their.
Oh, that's their map if they were.
Yeah, if they were to take over the soccer fields, et cetera.
This is, this is what their build out would look like, kind of an estimate.
That's soccer fields?
The soccer fields, yeah, you can see that the north is to the right-hand side of the, the paper there. And how they would do it in their different phases, so.
Hmm, interesting.
So the resolution for that was prepared, that just states that the county wants that parking lot to remain, a parking lot is on the commission agenda tomorrow, just.
Gives me a little more confidence to vote for. Who's that resolution going to? Once we do the resolution, there'll be copy dogged in city, Blake Moore, get copied, it's all of our. It's going to our federal people? Yeah.
Commissioner, I have a question about going west. If, if, let's say we just didn't have to move or we decided to move, uh, do we, would we have to acquire, does the county have any lands, like say, straight out twelve street or is near the mega site? Or would we just have to go find a hundred and fifty acres or a hundred acres and buy it? Is that what we would have to do?
Yeah, we've got, we've got land out there, but it's not ours, but we can sell you. Randy Marion will be glad to sell you a hundred and fifty. Getting close to a hundred thousand acre right now.
We've got land out there, we've got five hundred acres we could use.
Yes, so we're ten million dollars for land, ten to fifteen million for land, yeah.
Yeah.
Isn't that five hundred acres?
It's something like that, but it's under the same restrictions that this piece is under. Then it came from the federal government.
That's right.
And it's.
So we just got to keep replacing.
But you couldn't build anything else.
So is it worth that much then, if you can't build anything but something that's defined?
He's talking about the county piece.
Yeah, out, we've got a piece way out west, but it's, it'll be underwater if the lake rises, so.
Yeah, I mean, we.
We'll be firing up the governor's.
But it's pure white.
True.
Pure white?
Pure white.
Alkaline?
Yep, all the way. It's, uh, salt and.
Anything else that you wanted?
It's underwater, the water, like it's all hot.
If we ever get any water, yeah, again.
All right. We just wanted you to see next step in this, according to.
I appreciate you.
Well, it's a good estimate.
So I.
For some people.
Yeah, we're just, we're, we're just kind of operating that we're gonna get to keep the parking lot and we're gonna can get to continue doing business as is.
Continue that west parking lot and continue doing business as is, commissioners, this, this is really, really what it said, what we, uh, what it comes down to, is are we gonna stay in the fairgrounds business, and if so, what are we doing, and if we do consolidate some stuff, are we gonna stay in the soccer business and the softball business?
Well, then we will.
Things we need to talk about.
We will be doing that study after the first of the year.
See, I thought, I thought we were gonna look at a study.
Yeah, we are.
Yeah, with, uh, visit Ogden. Is that who's gonna do it?
No.
I don't think they're gonna do it, but I think they want to voice in.
I thought we were gonna check, uh, get into the recreation side and say, look.
We're meeting tomorrow to kind of discuss some of that stuff.
There's a meeting schedule.
Yeah.
Which is a.
To say, are we even gonna stay in the soccer business and?
Right, and I think that's what the study will tell us, is what should our fairgrounds look like?
And what we want to be when we grow up out there.
I think we want this study to tell us.
Yeah, we, and last, actually, last week at a conference, we found at least one firm that does this very thing. That's at least interested in maybe helping us write the spec or, you know, bidding on the.
We actually talked to, yeah.
That's what they do, so.
Yeah, I don't think, without even the study, just common sense tells me, I'm not sure we can stay in the, in the, uh, horse race business. Our track is the least used of it, probably everything, and it's, the ground is in the most demand.
Yeah, the cross-country course is probably actually the, which is part of, I mean, it's intertwined with the track.
Part of it.
The cross-country course is the least used. The auction arena was another one of those, so we've kind of repurposed that. Um, but yeah, it's, I think that study will be interesting if they can help us tell the future on what's gonna happen with the equine industry.
You know, you could keep the track if you just owned it, built all inside the parking and buildings or whatever.
The problem is, yeah, the problem is, is that then the horse racers don't want, the chariot racers, the horse racers don't want any distractions, and so, you almost can't schedule things if you've got anything going on, so.
I agree with that. Well, and when you, when you look at what's happening in sports, uh, Park City has, uh, they've had control of that baseball program up there. Triple crown?
Huh?
Just the triple crown?
Yeah, and it's been very successful for them, they just turned it loose. Well, that tells you something. If they feel, feel like the value to them is in something else, not in that, for there's, and that brought a lot of people in in the summer. They were very happy to go up there, they liked it, they, the, the user, I don't think there was any user issues. This all had to do with the fact that Park City didn't want to do it anymore.
Why?
Well, we don't really know totally why. Isn't that right, Marty? Jennifer?
Yeah, I don't know why, but I would imagine that something better came along.
Yeah, I don't know, Sarah would probably know the answer to that question, wouldn't it mean?
They should see where they dropped that.
Well, they just, this just happened, what was it, Harvey's over there about a month ago, that it happened a week or two before, probably six weeks ago, Gage?
Well, we've, we've been bidding on it all year, knowing that they were leaving up there. They put it out to bid, so.
Oh, did they?
Yeah.
Well, I think we all know that the horse industry in Weaver County got its last legs at some point, and I just, how, how last is it gonna be?
Well, in baseball, isn't where it used to be.
And they, yeah.
I mean, just isn't, the, the big players want the softball, and even softball, I, Ivy softball kind of on its last leg too.
Duncan, Duncan was a pro ball player here. What's your thoughts about all this?
Really?
You play for the Dodgers?
Cubs.
No.
Weaver State.
Weaver State.
Well, but the point is, other than through the education side of this, do they even have baseball leagues anymore?
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's still, I go with, with Lindsay from Visit Ogden to those, those conferences, and there's triple crown, there's USA baseball, there's, there's tons of those organizations.
I'm in Ogden, in the Weaver County area. I'm not, I don't, I've got a grandson that played right up till senior year in high school, and, uh, you know?
I know Ogden City has struggled.
Yeah, Ogden City has conflicts, um, a baseball conflict, okay?
Well, Duncan has been gobbling up the, the equestrian business as everyone else sort of closes, right, and so then the question is, it's working now, I don't know what fifteen or twenty years will be as urbanization is completely, you know.
We're gonna run out of fossils or we have to start riding horses again. It'll be, it'll just boom.
Let's just go drilling anywhere.
Well, one of the things that, that I know is, it's gonna be interesting to see over the next year is we've, we've kind of started the revamp and, you know, changing our, our fees, and that should be coming in front of you in the next couple of weeks, but our booking policy going along with that, because for a long time, we've done the small horse show over and over and giving them the same day every year with, with the understanding that we weren't going to make fifteen thousand dollars, we were gonna make three. Um, and with our new booking policy, it's going to kind of push to where the larger events, we can fit them in, we can have some open space for them to try to generate more revenue with, with those larger shows. The Utah Cutting Horse was over.
Right, right now, it's on the books for over a hundred thousand dollars for their ten-day show.
Congratulations. Which is awesome. And so the more of those, I mean, salt, with Salt Lakes, who knows what they're doing down there? Heber doesn't really have the staff to do as many, you know, events as we do, and so.
Farmington's about closed anyway.
Right, and so as, as those kind of go away, if we can narrow our focus on, on some of these larger events.
Yeah.
I mean, we could, we can make it a depth, you know, a depth into the overall horse equine of that industry, I think.
Yeah, 'cause I think it will stick around, but as Duncan is. You, we're gonna need to start focusing in on those big money-making events, 'cause they will be around, those, some of those barrel races that we'd like to get into that business a little more, the big barrel races.
But, does that mean we have to have, uh, more, uh, racetrack? I haven't heard anything said racetrack. So see, we could, if you lose that parking, Jennifer, in my mind, you're gonna have to repurpose one of those stills.
Absolutely.
Or the track, I mean, you're gonna have to make a decision, but it appears to me you're gonna lose something.
We're already moving toward a decision on some of those fields.
Right.
Yes. The soccer fields are very expensive. With very little revenue.
The soccer fields. Yeah. I see it.
And then you look at the drought conditions we have, and our soccer fields have never been in great condition anyway.
The base, this, the base and sub-base have been.
Yeah, they've always been kind of the, yeah, not favorite.
Makes sense. So, as it is right now, we keep going, uh, with regards to the, uh, bookings and things like, some of the small events. So what, what, what's gonna happen, commissioners, so you both know, is the local people are the, some of the small events, and they'll start calling.
Yeah.
And they're gonna start saying, hey, look, I pay my taxes, I put on a little event, and, uh, you know, I was gonna make two or three thousand dollars to the county, and Duncan them, they're bringing in this stuff that's twenty and thirty thousand dollars, 'cause we're holding a two and three thousand dollar event for our local guy. And so we have to make the decision, do we let our local guy run a horse business that team ropes? Or do we farm it out to a, a group that can bring us a hundred grand or whatever? I mean, it's, you run it like a business, and unfortunately, they've, and, and that can be said, our local people have enjoyed great rates and, and, but they've also been our biggest critics. Uh, the, we get great reviews from people, most, when they're out of town, we get great reviews. When they're local, we get no money and we get crap reviews. That's how it is, so.
We're subsidizing some of these events, I think you saw the.
We subsidize the local events.
Some of them weren't even three thousand dollar events. Duncan's doing events where it's costing him to, to stay open for.
Well, I think to Commissioner Jenkins' comment with regards to the track, we're subsidizing horse racing. We're subsidizing, when you come to the usage, we're subsidizing the equestrian, you know, the cross-country course.
Well, and everything on, on our.
Right.
On our fields, you know, soccer fields and ball fields and, uh, any of that stuff, those guys are playing, what's one with the throw the ball?
Lacrosse.
But lacrosse, all of those, we're subsidizing.
Yeah, and to that point, commissioner, it's a bit of an existential question, right? Do we wanna, it's okay if you commissioners feel like we want to pay for services for our community to better their life. Where's the cutoff? What's the level? What do we want to offer? What don't we want to offer?
Yeah.
What do we want to subsidize? What don't we want to subsidize?
Well, if you started these park districts out there and yet incorporated there.
That's the question.
Our goal hopefully would be the fact they'd start the parks and pick that up and take that over. And that we wouldn't have to continue to do it.
The small barrel races and team ropings are gonna have to go to Hookah Park or Plain City.
Yeah, the smaller ones, yeah. You're right. No, Placey's got a great arena, that little one out West Warren, it's a pretty nice arena. There's decent arenas out there.
It costs us if we're gonna keep our fairgrounds. I mean, probably the best thing we can do is just close the whole thing down and just take no tax increment, but just take the gravy, right? We save a million and a half on the one side on the subsidizing golden spike budget. Scott, we save a million and a half dollars a year there, and we're putting this much money into our account. It's a three million dollar a year turn of events for us.
I, I think that, you know.
But you have to replace it because of the land and water conservation. So, I, I mean, unfortunately, the answer is not that easy, so.
Yeah, well, there'd be land and water conservation, we ought to tie that up.
I don't understand that.
So the land and water conservation, um, agreement that helped with the original, some of the original structures out there, said that in perpetuity, that land would be maintained for recreational purposes for the public, so.
Well, it's still maintained as recreational.
Potentially, yeah.
If we closed it down, you would say, replace it with something else, recreational.
Yeah, that's, fortunately, it's just not that easy to.
But I don't, I don't know if we want to.
Well, hold on, so if you put a parking lot, if you close down a field, put a parking lot on it, the parking is still for recreation, so they can go to the other events.
Right, right.
Commissioner Harvey.
I'm saying if we were to close the fairgrounds down entirely, bulldoze the whole thing.
Oh.
Take, clear the site and go with that.
Boyer.
You know, that'd make us three million dollars a year, that's a, to our budget.
I just, you know.
Yeah, all that for three million bucks, so we've got a eighty-eight million dollar.
I get it.
Hundred and twenty million. I mean, uh, you're stepping over dollars to pick up dimes.
Yeah.
In addition to that, you're gonna, you know, we would ignore our largest demographic, are you then gonna follow to the theater and the conference center, right? Because they're all servicing a certain portion of our county.
It makes the, it makes it so that Weaver County is a great place to live, it's part of that other part of the business.
I think one of the issues we brought up in the budget cycle is, yes, we do subsidize, um, the golden spike a million, a million and a half a year, but there's a lot of infrastructure repairs that need to be done out there. And so that's the question, what happens if we lose the parking structure, we don't make any money on the soccer fields, what, I think that's what the reason for the study would be, is what business can we be in and still preserve some type of recreation out there, but could actually, I mean, if we have to dump thirty or sixty million dollars to maintain that, to, to fix the sidewalks, to fix the buildings, you know, I mean, we have a big capital project list out there. So you've got to consider that cost as well, so it's not, you know, do we get three million dollars or not? I mean, we, we've got a huge amount of capital investment that needs to be made in the Golden Spike Event Center. So what does that look like? If you lose the parking structure, Morgan, you get rid of the field, you get rid of the horse track, what does that look like? What's left on that footprint? Or does it make more sense to move it somewhere else if that's gonna be too expensive to do that? You know, demolition and reconfigure, if we're gonna build new, why don't we build new somewhere else where we get exactly what we want and not try to fit it on some weird-looking parcel that after we've lost our parking? So, I mean, that's really the question, and that's why we're trying to do the studies to see, okay, what's the future like this? Is it make sense to have the Golden Spike Event Center, but not the racetrack, not the, not the softball fields, not the soccer fields, it's like the cities do those? But at a certain point, it's, it's parks and recreation, I mean, it doesn't, doesn't make money, right? So there's, there's other reasons to do it besides just the budget. We're just at an opportunity right now just to look and say, okay, is this the best spot for, we have all these improvements we need to make, does it make sense to dump that money here? Does it make sense to dump that money somewhere else?
That spelt exactly my points, Scott, thank you. And that's the full thing, you said thirty to sixty million dollars to rehab the Golden Spike, well, according to Boyer's figures, it's sixty million, we could build a whole new Golden Spike, which I don't think, right, it's, it's just an expensive operation to keep running out of.
Yeah, true.
Yeah, and to Scott's point, I mean, even if, even if the parking lot went away, it, it would really be more than just turning land into a parking, different land into a parking lot, we would have to. We would have to consider, you know, knocking down the stadium or relocating the Golden Spike itself or something because just of how the location and the traffic patterns and egress and, and ingress would work. So, I mean, it's a big question, and then it can get there.
Yeah, and that's my point, is if, if we lose that parking, we have to demo and redesign the whole thing anyway. Well, does it make sense to do it here? Does it make sense to do it somewhere else? If this is valuable land to Boyer, we can expand our industrial park, get another thousand jobs in here and go find a parcel somewhere else that we could design to be exactly what we want it to be, not a soccer field, not a horse track, but a, an event center, arena, or whatever, whatever that happens to be.
But Scott, it, it doesn't look like Boyer's willing to pay at these figures, doesn't look like they're, they, it doesn't look like they're willing to wanna pay for it. Doesn't want it that bad.
Oh, yeah, I don't think they would want it. But we have to spend thirty or sixty million anyway, right?
The taxpayers, the taxpayers have already paid for an asset, the fairgrounds, I don't want them to have to pay for it again. It's not used up, it's not totally used up right now. That wouldn't be fair. It, it has to be the private industry, if they want that so much, then they're gonna have to pay to do it somewhere else. And I'm not willing to, I'm with you, I'm not willing to do tax increment to fund it for them.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know if it's thirty million to rehab it, but it's in the millions.
But we talk about rehabbing it. The place has not fallen down out there, this is maintenance, regular maintenance, so we do.
And some capital investment, yeah.
What capital investment? What they're saying is, is if we did lose the parking lot, we may have to, we may have to move the stadium or.
The configuration.
Do away with the stadium. Well, you say that, but I would assume we'd go out to an open field and put a parking lot in.
I think they're saying they need to actually tear down the stadium, tear down the Golden Spike events or maybe.
Those are just.
Because in our last meeting with commissioners, if we, if we put parking clear to the north end, people can't take their horses all that way to the arena to an event, it's just too far. Whereas the barns are right out back.
I understand, and we will have to work that.
Right.
But I don't believe for a minute that we're even in, even close to the, where we'd have to put fifteen or twenty million in. But I think, I just think that's ridiculous to think that. And we're not gonna do it, we don't have the money to do it. I mean, it's just that simple.
Does, uh, Utah statute allow for special local option bill tax?
I, I don't know the answer to that, I know you have a couple areas that have that, but I don't know if requirements are before.
Okay.
Oh, and I don't know, we can't do that. Engage in all that. Yeah, you can't do local off.
We talked about that before.
You can do a resort.
Resort fee.
Resort tax.
But there's sales tax out there anyway, right? Cuz it's all, you know, industrial, what sales tax do you get?
Commissioner.
The, the way we do it in Doris, you, you tax the whole entire county. Any, any sales tax, a percentage of that sales tax and the entire county would go towards the project.
Well, we have the option to do a countywide redevelopment area essentially to do a project. And so we could, there's other options through property tax, I don't know if we wanna do that.
Yeah, this is.
Well, we're, in, the whole thing, we're gonna just have to raise the property tax, that's what it's gonna get down to.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, yeah, eventually that's what, that would happen.
So after we, and I think after this study is done, we'll have a better idea of what direction we would go if our, if our parking did go.
Yeah.
Back to your question about just rehabbing commissioner, it's just things like, uh, rain gutters, the whole place. They're, they're those big ones, right? So that's, uh, the, there's concrete, whole sections of concrete kind of falling off of the arena building. So there's some, you know, the stadium's got some concrete issues, but there's some major, I just call them renovation or, or repair or upgrade, right?
I absolutely agree with that, and the fact we might need to put a few million a year into this to catch it up.
Yeah.
Yeah, but we're not gonna
Right.
do a twenty or thirty million dollar renovation of it.
Right.
Hell, look how long we, no, I'm sorry. Look how long we've tried to get you money over to, uh, Eccles Convention Center.
Right.
And then we finally got you a little this year, but jeez, we've been trying to do it forever.
That's true.
And we're, we keep chipping away out there year by year, but, um, we got some stuff that's.
Yeah, I mean, you're talking those bigger numbers, if you're talking about knocking things down.
Right, right, yeah, that's in the third.
Then those get bigger, but, I mean, we got some, we got some work to do, we got some plumbing and I need some advice on.
How many chariot race weekends do you have this year?
Eight.
And then we had some flat track.
To be, in fairness to the horse racing community, it was our best year because the, the Hispanic match races, we were bringing in twenty thousand dollars a weekend with it, with the beer sales and the rental.
Hmm.
Um.
The Mexicans are big, big drinkers.
That, which goes to the point that we're gobbling up other people's matches, we're just taking it all. And it's actually turning into some significant business.
Yeah, it was, it was our best year with the horse track. That doesn't mean that it was groundbreaking and we'd made millions of dollars, but it was our best year.
To the, you know, to the defense of the track, at least we have a volunteer group that helps us with the maintenance on that, so.
Is that going okay?
Ups and downs.
So Scott, how much does, the, how much they lose of you?
Million to million and a half.
Million to million.
And that's just their operating loss.
Yeah, capital, capital investment, can draw that up closer to two. Well, but the concessions, well, concessions is actually pulling in a great little net profit this year, so.
Duncan's double his concessions revenue.
Net profit.
Net profit over any of the last four years.
Incredible.
Completely double.
Congratulations, but in the end, we're losing money out there, and we always have and we always will. So I'm not pointing any fingers at anybody. So why would we go out there and do anything more to increase our loss more? And so many times, that's just what happens, I mean, we build a new archery facility and it's, it's beyond what we thought.
Hold on, she's got a little announcement to tell you on the archery. You dude, Marty.
Which one?
Well, we don't make money on it, right?
No, we're way closer to better than what we estimated.
Uh, Todd told me, Todd told me the end of November number, uh, they were up thirty-five thousand dollars or something.
Yeah, he's, he's exceeded his revenues and held his expenses very well. His net loss is gonna be
Way less.
Uh, less than, much less than anticipated, so.
What was anticipated?
I think, I think for two thousand, I think for twenty twenty-one, about eighty-seven, eighty-three, eighty-seven thousand?
So he's targeting maybe thirty, thirty thousand loss, losses.
Still loss though, Todd point.
Yeah.
And you just, and that's my whole point. You can't build, you can't do enough to make a profitable.
Not.
Under perfect circumstances.
That's why private industry doesn't do it, you know?
That's exactly right.
You know, we do it because the subway and the five guys and the roosters across the street down here, part of what we do for them is keep them in business downtown, right?
No.
Cuz the big weekends, I mean, now those county citizens appreciate it because we're helping keep them in business downtown.
Sure.
I'd consider you acknowledging that.
Right.
Even though they won't tell you.
Yeah.
Well, they don't, they don't.
We don't have any impact actually.
He talked on the city, we don't really make much of an impact.
Well, when next time the line is fifty D about the five guys on the dance weekend.
Take a picture, please. So I'm gonna send it to Tom, Tom, there's no impact from our dance group. Please, no, I'd love for those kind of pictures, I'm gonna start bombarding Tom.
Well, I'm just gonna add, with, we do collect the restaurant revenue, tourism tax revenue, and that money goes into the Culture Parks and Rec Fund. And so it doesn't matter to me that the Golden Spike loses a million and a million and a half if it's, if it's subsidized by the tax revenue enough to cover the costs. And that's what we've been trying to do is get Culture Parks and Rec to be able to be sustainable with the revenue base that we have. So we, we acknowledge it's always going to lose money, it's never gonna cover its variable costs, but we have a special tax set aside just for that.
And it's close, it's.
It's actually covering. Other than it's capital.
Other than the capital investment, other than the repairs, other than the.
Right.
You know.
Yeah, so it may, it may come close to operations, but it's not coming anywhere close to depreciation.
Sure.
Future revenue.
And, and I'm not, I'm not proposing this at all, but if Golden Spike Event Center wasn't gone and we didn't have that, then there's enough money in the Culture Parks and Rec to fund the entire Culture Parks and Rec operations, including capital. And I'm not saying that we wanna get rid of this, I'm just saying that the order of mat, that's kind of the order of mattoo we're talking about, you know?
Yeah, that applies also, you didn't have a conference.
Sure, or you put the conference center.
You could put all that to the background, but I mean, it go, it can go either way.
Well, and, and the argument I make is it's almost like we have one big facility, too many for the amount of tax revenue that we have now. It doesn't mean that we have to get rid of one or anything, I'm just, if we want that fund to cover its costs, including capital, we have one facility, too many, so we either need to build several more hotels, or we need to scale back what we're doing in terms of expenses.
Well.
Well, we just got one new hotel, it hasn't been running a year yet, so we'll see a little something off.
Yeah, we are seeing some, and we're collecting some of the Airbnb's and VRV also, yeah, in the upper valley.
And I think we're looking into services that possibly we can eliminate.
Mm-hmm, we are.
That's, that's what we're doing right now.
We, we just really have to, between our staffing issues and just, just how busy we've been, we're just, we're.
So what, what started us into this discussion is the fact that it wouldn't bother me at all if we had to end up losing one or two of those fields for parking.
That's right.
And, uh, we would just repurpose them and do away with soccer or, uh, way with.
Right, I think we're just, you know, I was, I was telling Commissioner Harvey a little while ago, I just, I hate to decommission the soccer fields and then not do anything with them because then the general public is gonna be like, well, you're not, you're not doing anything, why can't we just continue to play soccer on them, you know?
Oh, I agree.
Like we didn't want to.
I don't wanna decommission that, that was on my agenda.
We gotta have a plan. We take something down, we gotta have a plan to put soccer up. I think we need to be, having this discussion and be prepared because as we know, the city could roll in and take that part.
Well, I suspect they will.
Right, and we need to kind of be prepared for.
Now, we're talking the bar, we're talking to the west. Well, in fact, they've already told us we're getting ready to build building room.
Right.
That's way out west.
That's way out, that's not our part, but as Marcus said.
But they're getting close.
They've requested Blake Moore changed the verbiage.
Yeah, but I thought we had a lease on it.
We do.
No.
Not on the parking.
We don't.
No.
They would never, they would never include that, they would never amend the lease to include that, no matter how much we.
Okay, so you're saying that's odds on we will lose it.
There is a deed, going back to that quick claim deed from the federal government to the city saying you guys can have this property if it stays for recreational purposes.
So that, that's why they gotta get Blake Moore to change it.
Which is why they're asking Blake Moore to take.
So are they back after Blake Moore?
I mean, they have been.
Yeah, and, as you said.
Since when?
Since a month ago.
I don't know, Mark said, I, we heard.
Well, remember Mark said that they were gonna drop it hard after we had that little meeting with them a couple, three months ago on Zoom.
And Mark.
And they were gonna also help us with the Doug.
Mark, no, because Mark said, he said, let's just get it changed in case we wanna do something. And we all know that that is, that's, trust me, I have personal experience across the street with that.
So we know where that's going.
He, he plans on taking it if he can.
In case doesn't mean anything does anymore.
Okay, what else we need to discuss here?
I think that's it, we just wanted you to be aware that those numbers have come back to us and.
Thank you very much.
Interesting, thanks a lot.
Can you replay that?
Is there any reason to play with it until we figure out, I mean, cuz really, until we know what's gonna happen with that parking lot? If the parking lot changes, we need to study, we know what's coming up, and have meetings to what we're gonna do in the future. Cuz if the choice is between thirty million here and thirty million somewhere else, that's a different decision, guys, we can just keep it in the back of our mind.
Yeah. Scott, would you have a minute to state to this first, first portion of this next discussion? He's gonna want us to use.
If you want us to, then we're, we're happy to. Do that.
Not just ARPA funds, but also U2 shows, ARPA funds and, um, municipal services budget to back up, they wanna back up, uh, Utopia, you know, this is this, your buddy, uh, right here.
Elliot.
Yeah, Elliot Moses, he wants to use municipal services funds to back to do the guaranteed backup. Faster we can do this, the better.
This will be the fourth time we talk to him. Thank you so much.
Thanks, guys.
Yeah.
How well do you know him?
Christie? Go ahead and send in our next party. Elliot, come on in, you got all the horsepower here, please sit down.
Time's right, huh?
Yes.
Um, what I need is the connections.
So.
Why don't you log in, wa, log into our Zoom account and do it that way, please.
That's the one way that we talked about that probably isn't gonna work. I've got a, uh, thumb drive.
Let me put it right there, yeah.
Go ahead, I'm gonna.
I need to go use the restroom while you're getting set up.
So you just.
Elliot, what you got for an hour and fifteen minutes? We haven't got that kind of time today.
Oh, I think.
You've got a lot of time on the agenda here.
It's PowerPoint, you can run that.
Sean, you have to keep one?
Uh, I can grab it.
And just in case you thought I wasn't prepared, I brought her copies of the presentation.
Good.
So if we, if we, uh, need them, I have them.
I'd love to see one, if you don't mind, I like to make notes.
It's there just to do that, it's just a little hard read cuz it's tiny.
Oh, yeah. I'm almost to the point where I need glasses, I was driving the.
Yes, but it'll be up on the screen.
Signs or anything, it's like, oh boy.
It'll be up on the screen, so if you can't read a word, you can find it. But let's say that you have presbyneopias, I've often suffered with, which means nearsightedness, uh, just ask. Be happy to make sure everybody can understand what we got. All right, well, if I don't need to power up the computer, then I'm set with that, set that over here. And, uh, looks like a major equipment I'm gonna need, I can wear on my face. And I'll be ready to start. Except we're missing most of the commercials.
Two out of three, that ain't bad.
Well, we got two out of three.
You got three.
There you go, Gage is back. All right, I'll, uh, get started, cuz that way if I finish early, you have more time to do something else. Um, this presentation, um, is to pick up where we were about a year ago and to give status on where we've been and where we think we can go and look at our current options. And I'm also gonna present a few questions because I'd like to know how the county does certain things because I think there's some possibilities that we can work with that. So I need to go to the, let's try the next chart, if that isn't it, we'll go, oh, is that, I can do it right there then.
Yep, you could go through.
Okay, that's what I just said, so. There we go. Okay, so the, 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 the county areas we've been looking at are made up of three unincorporated areas. You got UH for U N Highlands, WW, West Weaver, O V for Ogden Valley. And in this area, um, uh, U N Highlands is the most dense of the three, but it's not dense enough to be uh, suitable for, say, an X, Xfinity, or at least it hasn't been until this past year to come in and, and go and run underground pipes and stuff to go do fiber optic cable. Um, but U N Highlands at the same time is the most ready to turn dirt so that we can get, uh, open access, get more ISPs in and so forth. But it's also the most difficult to qualify for grants because we have some service, it's just not as good and reliable as, uh, what we've been looking for, and only closed systems have been building there. In West Weaver, it's the least dense, but they have the most rapid development and some development is high density, so it's got some of those positive areas that you can get things into. Um, but, uh, the developments, uh, need to, really need to be pre-wired so that when fiber optic cable comes by on the highway, they just connect there soon as that happens. If it's already existing in a, in a state highway, they can connect immediately. But I think without, with, and I, and I've got it later in the presentation, uh, suggesting it as a change to zone. For Ogden Valley, um, it's got the incorporated area of Huntsville, which make those some problems. Uh, you've got all West Communications, that franchise has been awarded, but I don't know if they've actually done anything yet, I'm glad you could see.
You know, they're laying fiber in Huntsville town right now.
I do not know that, but.
Yeah.
All West does not do all fiber. What they do.
This is not all West, this is two other.
Yeah, the, the franchise agreement that was given to all West just allows them to use the county's rights of ways.
Yeah.
That, it, it doesn't, we didn't award them a contract or anything like that.
I understand that. I understand that. I talked to one of the people at All West, one of the vice presidents. And I got a pretty good idea of the network they're building. It's very similar in engineering to what Comcast Xfinity is none. Which is they take fiber to an area and they probably taking it to Huntsville, but then they lay all coax from there. So your house, you're gonna get something that go with the RG fifty-eight.
Well, what I'm telling you is Huntsville town has two contractors in there right now laying fiber. On their own dime. Huntsville town's not putting any money, county's not putting any money, and the two providers will do that on their subscription.
And what I'm saying is the fiber that's coming in isn't going to terminate in, in anyone's house. They're gonna go to coax to get the termination of people's homes.
So what, what kind of speed will that give them at their home?
Well, it depends on the technology, but Xfinity is able to deliver, uh, one point two gigabits. But that's download. Upload is something quite a bit slower, they're working towards dedicated speeds. Haven't done it yet, but the main downfall that I've seen personally is Xfinity has a lot of. downtime. They're dark. They may be dark right now in my neighborhood. And the reason why is when you go to coax, you have to power it locally in each neighborhood. So you've got a post with a meter on it and that neighborhood cluster is powered from it. So if power goes down, Rocky Mountain Power or whatever power source, the neighborhood goes down. So I get all kinds of calls every time the power goes down, my internet's down. And I'm the only, I'm the only one in my neighborhood who has Xfinity and is not down. And when that happens, they said, well, how come you're not down? This is, what deal, what kind of deal have you done? And I said, I have another ISP also, and my firewall's set for failover. So when Xfinity with gigabit service goes down, I go over to a microwave system that I have network balanced. That brings me two channels of microwave then. And since then we got off of that and onto Xfinity, uh, in, in large numbers, then. I have much better service where, that's how that stuff works.
Okay.
So.
Um, but once again, you didn't answer my question about speeds. You said you have one point.
Two gigabits per second, that's speed.
You have that?
Yeah, I have it.
So that was upload.
Download.
What about upload?
It's really variable, um.
Yeah, well, that's what I was asking for, you didn't answer.
I'm getting. I, I've tested my network. If it's over a wifi, I get forty-something, something in that range. And, uh, and that's megabits. So it's not able to use the full speed that I have coming in. As far as the best upload speed, I, I don't have the numbers with me, but, um. There may be cases where I can, I can see better than a hundred megabits, but it is very patchy and glitchy. And. It's there when it wants to be. That's what I can describe it. I, I've got a thing about surveying people in Uwah Highlands after this has come in. And, and, uh, I want to point to what they have to say when I get to that. So continuing with this page here, uh, you know, if you got other question, maybe that'll answer it and I'll come to that later. I don't wanna, I don't wanna miss not answering it. Um, Uwah Highlands only has, uh, the closed ISP networks available. The closed networks do not allow other ISPs or any governments, um, and, and the Edwin program is the big one. Uh, that, that we see now, that's the one for the early detection of, um.
Fire.
Fire on the, on the hillsides. Um, whereas open networks, uh, that can work on it, uh, West Weaver and all the county. As a whole, would be aided long-term by changing zoning requirements, which I mentioned a little bit ago. To require all future subdivisions to pre-wire for fiber. When fiber comes through a nearby highway subdivision gets connected, developers can still wire for other closed networks too. The cheapest to do at this stage of the development. So when they're already digging and putting in utilities, put in all the fiber and coax and whatever they, they think they need. It's the digging that's the most expensive, not, not the cable. Um, Williams International made a whole business out of that, very simple principle. For Ogden Valley, what's that? Go ahead. Oh, sorry. Ogden Valley, All West is another closed ISP network. And I made the note, I've already explained, Edwin is the early fire detection program that has not been addressed or implemented in Weaver County yet. Uh, next slide.
Uh, Trey, just click.
Just click, okay. Um, the recommended grant requirement by Weaver County, um. They, the, the county has been, uh. Pushing an RFQ, and I don't know if they've actually put it out. But the criteria, um, in it are basically along these lines. To be open access, all fiber, meaning all the way to the modem inside households or businesses. A fixed completion date for the whole project and, and for each unincorporated area. A dedicated minimum speeds for upload and download, not that they're necessarily the same, but they're, they're dedicated. Um, Edwin ready, uh, and includes gigabit speeds. I'm already seeing hardware coming out, not just for three gigabits and five gigabits, but ten, twenty-five, forty and hundred gigabit speed equipment. So, um, the march for higher speeds is already happening. Uh, upgradable speeds now into the future, the changes, um. Into the ground, what's, what's buried are, are just not needed. They may be needed way, way in the future, but to increase the speeds on a section of fiber, you just change the circuit board on either end. And it'll go whatever speed those things are rated at. That's how you do the upgrade, no one about work. The, uh, grants required by the state, um, the window opened on one July. The next window after that was twenty-two October, and they have another one that just opened, uh, this month, I believe. Uh, limit of one grant, so all three areas, this is the unincorporated areas of Weaver County, must be on the same request. And it doesn't require all fiber, uh, may require completion date earlier than some bidders can deliver. Because a lot of them haven't been able to specify when they're gonna be done. And the other requirements on the past page, a lot of them are not met by what the state's doing. So that, uh, if you want gigabit speeds, for example, the state. May not require that. The state's density requirements, um, take you in Highlands. Out of those particular funding things. The other areas, I'm just not sure whether they would fit or not. Um, it's, uh. Every program seems to be a little bit different. But, uh, Uwah Highlands is also, uh, kept out of the funding because of what Xfinity has come in with. Um, each funded program has different requirements, one unincorporated area may qualify and another may not. The USDA, so that's the Department of Agriculture, offers, um, grants and T-rate, that's treasury rate. That's one of the federal programs that was approved. It grants, uh, limited up to twenty-five percent. Uh, the, the grants are limited up to twenty-five percent by the USDA. It can be matched with other grants. The T-rate financing can be done for a hundred percent of the cost of a project. The request can be for both grant money and financing. So, eh, the different things the USDA offers can really span a lot of different possibilities. Except, we still don't fit into them, except maybe the T-rate financing, which is like two percent right now. Which is way less than what, uh, financing Utopia has. What they're lined up with. I think they were around six or six something percent. Um, recommend requesting federal grant money because the state alone's not efficient. So if we can still get it, uh, get it where we can apply it in the county. Uh, financing is offered by, uh, bidders sometimes and could be a much higher rate than the T-rate. And that's what Utopia has. The, uh, USDA financing may be an opportunity to lower the overall cost below any bid that, uh. Doesn't have T-rate financing. So what we came in a year ago with in Utopia's plan. Um, with, with a four-point interest rate difference, the cost becomes substantially lower. And, uh, whether it can remove the, the difference is questionable. But it would certainly take a big chunk out of the difference in, uh, costing. Uh. Requires less or no grant money, uh, to do the, uh, T-rate financing, because they'll do a hundred percent. Eh, it can be paid off sooner because of the lower rate. And it does take on more risk by the county, but it's not a risk that, uh. The county ne- necessarily has to put money up to. So, um, we have to back it though. Well, backing isn't the same as paying it out. We have to back it though. And that's the way we came in last year, okay? So I have some ideas of how the county can, um. Not even have to back it. So can you jump to that part of your presentation? I know you've put a lot of work into this, Elliot, but I'm trying to get, I know that what you're trying to get to is. You want to see how we can get faster service to upper U N R. And, and we have tried extensively to do that, but we're not willing to back the process. We have other people to do that, so.
How about if I give you a short answer and come back to it later, because there's a lot of questions I have in it.
We, I, I'm sorry, I, I want to be fair to you, but we have a COVID presentation at three o'clock and I want to make sure that you get everything.
I think I will. I've got twenty some total pages and I'm already on bottom of six.
Great.
Okay.
The, the short answer is it deals with service districts, but I have questions about how the county operates.
Scott, that's why you're here is to service district questions.
Okay.
Okay, go ahead.
Do, does that get the basic question?
It does, I'd like to just jump to that myself, but if you want to finish.
Well, I'd like to get the other things in because it forms the basis for the questions that came to be answered.
Great.
So it, it, it becomes pretty important. Um, so I got that, so let me go to the next page, I'm already on seven. The federal government grant requirements, uh, require demonstration, well, the USDA in particular requires demonstration of experience operating a fiber network. County doesn't have that. However, the way we're looking at, uh, doing this, uh, it would be demonstrated by the vendor, which would be Utopia. And unless somebody else comes in with equivalent capabilities, we'd use them hypothetically. We'd use them to provide the experience. Um, and we would award them a contract to build the system and then service it afterwards. And that's essentially what Utopia does, except they also keep the money, which pays for the system. Um, hereby financing it also, uh, it would remain within a political jurisdiction in the county. You know, whether that's the county or a service district, uh, and then can pay off any bonding that much quicker. USDA requires holding two years of operating costs at the beginning of the project, that's exactly how Utopia quoted it. USDA requires the project to be government-owned and controlled, Utopia is. Um, recommend the USDA financing for all of it at T-rate to increase the viability and lower the breakpoint and pay it off sooner.
What you said T, T-rate was today?
It's around two percent. It's what they talk about mostly for things that are, uh, uh, ten and fifteen year. Uh, the, the twenty-five year runs a little higher, but not a whole point higher. Other considerations, with different qualifications for each unincorporated area suggest grant proposals. Um, describe the project as a combination of all three. So if you're trying to request grant funding. You, you, you have descriptions of each unincorporated area. And then you put in for it as a combination of those. Uwah Highlands is most ready to turn dirt and should therefore get any first grant money that is qualified for. And then subsequent.
Because they're, because in your estimation, they're the most ready?
The most ready, okay, yeah. Subsequent grant money would be entirely for the other two, uh, unincorporated areas. Uh, those areas will require greater relative percentage of project grant money due to the greater distances between front doors and the greater area overall. In other words, they're gonna be more expensive projects anyway. They're gonna need more grant money, uh, if anybody, if any is to be found. Uwah Highland also has dark islands in what Comcast has built. Do you understand what I mean by a dark island?
We deal with islands all the time.
Island of property with no service in it, none. And Comcast just built it that way. I tried to suggest ways to work around it, and I thought I had some pretty good ideas, but they, uh. Uh, were not open to that. Um, they said they'd look at it, but so far they haven't done it, I think. So there's people that actually had all this fiber going around them and they didn't get anything, not even coax. Comcast may not have the means or budget to solve their engineering dilemma. Because they're very much cost-driven in the engineering solutions they do. West Weaver will be able to reach further and share trunk lines with UDOT, so any state highway. They budget money towards putting the fiber in, under that highway. So that's how you do so much of the area of West Weaver and Ogden Valley. And as those areas grow, you're gonna have more state highways, so it reaches further. Um, West Weaver has multifamily projects coming that, uh, can be required to be pre-wired with fiber by zoning ordinance. So bringing that point up again. Uh, Huntsville, as an incorporated area in Ogden Valley, must be addressed fairly with respect to other cities in the county, so whatever is done. Um, for any, any entity. In, in this fiber development, needs to really be able to apply it with any city. So when I start talking about service districts later, that becomes very critical because they're, they exist and are able to be a servant district of their own. Which can be very helpful that way. The rest of Ogden Valley can be engineered with hybrid engineering plan to reduce high cost for dis- so, as an example, run fiber on utility poles. Some of this method can be used in West Weaver farm areas too, but as high density development comes, then you transition to underground. Just ways to reduce cost and lower the development. Requirements of the, uh, projects. Roadblocks, the FCC has used definition of broadband of twenty-five megabit, uh, download, three megabit upload. Um, if you have it, you don't qualify for grants. The way things are understood now, we don't even know if we can qualify any unincorporated area by itself. Uwah Highlands hasn't met that when actually tested. So, um, in addition to the density requirements, because they're funding mainly rural areas. Uh, you also have this FCC limit. Now, the way the last federal program was approved. They're going to hundred megabit download service, but I think the download, or the upload requirement. Maybe higher than what Xfinity's basic service is. Uh, the new state guidance, uh, may have moved to the hundred, uh, download twenty upload requirement, which, um. I think is what the federal government's using. Um, the FCC relies on provider info, so mainly the ISPs such as Comcast. That sometimes contains wishful thinking such as, quote, we are working to expand that area, unquote. And when they get around to it, they actually put something in. Uh, that is rife throughout all those maps that say, oh, yeah, this is what the coverage is, and it's not real. FCC, consider Uwah Highlands to have method criteria since that's what the ISPs are afforded, so they go based on that. Now Comcast has expanded throughout Uwah Highlands with up to gigabit service, and that's what they call it. It's technically about one and a quarter gigabits, but when you bring it in through a modem, they pull off a big chunk of it. To do their, uh, Xfinity wifi open access. So as long as you have an Xfinity account, you can get in anywhere in a neighborhood. And that pulls off. And that pulls off. All but seven hundred megabits. So inside your modem, you've got seven hundred megabits and that gets chopped up some more. Based on if you have your own Wi-Fi system and so forth. So what I did with mine is I cut all that stuff out. I had to figure out how to go in and modify the settings. So the one point two coming in goes to roughly right about a gigabit. And then. I take it in elsewhere and I can get up to about seven hundred megabit to a hardwired PC and within the network. If I go to Wi-Fi, it drops down to about five percent of that. So. That's what I've been able to test out and actually demonstrate in my own network. Footprint still has dark islands of service. Some areas are still reporting frequent outages. And I'm hearing mog in city people as well that live nearby. It's it's it seems like it's almost every day or every week that there's an outage somewhere in the area. That's just what you can expect out of Xfinity service. They they're not a ninety nine percent uptime service. All West Communications has not broken ground to our knowledge. You're suggesting, Gage, that they may have broken ground in Huntsville.
Well, I'm not sure if All West, I know Liberty Broadband and. What's the other one up there? Utah Broad. So I don't even, when you talk about All West, I don't even know what that is. But there's there's two providers that are actually going through Huntsville right now. They've got their cable on the ground, their fiber in the land up there right now.
Yeah, well typically they all hire contractors to do the digging.
Yeah, it's so, yeah, but so is companies.
You have you have to ask to find out who they're contracting with. But it takes many, many years to build out and does not finish with fiber into homes. So Xfinity alone had a three year delay on aqueducts. Continuing with these roadblocks, Comcast Comcast left dark islands and Uwana Highlands as as mentioned. Final rulemaking used historic FCC definition of broadband, which appears to have changed, which I've mentioned, but. When you go through stuff, each grant program. May work to different standards and it's it's hot scotching through that. It's very challenging, but we're we're not finding anything that we get all green lights on. We hit red lights here and there until we haven't been able to get through any of the funding. In some, the unincorporated areas may now meet USDA test for low interest loan regardless of the FCC test. Which is a big one to explore. So specifically, Uwana Highland status. Eighty percent of the Uwana Highlands households measured six months after Comcast installation. Would switch to Utopia within two years or immediately or by when the contract period ends. So. The the number is right, right about eighty percent. Only twenty three percent of Uwana Highland Comcast subscribers would stay with Comcast if all fibers were offered. So this is the, well, how does the existing compare to what's proposed with a switch? We still hear regular complaints that Comcast goes down when the power is out. Comcast was out for most of the day during the week of the eighteen through twenty third of October. Which was a major, major outage period. And again, I think they may be out today or or on that because Rocky Mountain Power notified us that the power is going down. I had to go start my generator this morning. It didn't flip on automatically, but. Options for Uwana Highlands. We talked about Plan A, B, C, and D last time. Plan A was to obtain grant funding needed to bridge the gap to launch. Isn't working because of the FCC criteria. Plan B to go with other fiber optic provider takes longer and shares all the problems with A, but not vice versa. It is not open access, so there's no competition on the line. And not sure if they will ever complete the project and not entirely fiber. So KENEXT is the one we looked at there because they use more fiber. But we have been able to find a project in Utah that they've actually gone all the way to completion on. Even though they're very busy recruiting projects. Plan C to create a service district takes much longer and has much higher overhead costs. However, the county already operates an unincorporated service area and may be able to divide this into. The three unincorporated areas individually as needed. And this is where I'm going to get into the questions because we need to understand better how the county is doing some of those things. The use of property tax is the first backup for the financing usually thought about. The sales tax idea has added flexibility of targeting users only and not property owners. This would not be a broad sales tax. It would only be on internet service, which is what this is designed to bring in. So it's it's more directly taxing users. The flexibility of not, and it could be just simply a user fee, which is the most precise way of pinpointing it. The flexibility of not needing either one is strong, is a strong plus for projects. So. If you just use a a user fee. Based on the studies that would Utopia should be able to do it. The service district concept pertains to the idea that users will pay for the cost of the construction through the usage fees. If you don't use it, you don't pay for it. The property tax capability is there to help bonding and as a final backstop instead of the county. Projection, projection go ahead on a a projection of paying for themselves. That's the go no go point. So if Utopia does their final survey, they decide that it's it's go for them. Then that means that the the. Projection of paying for themselves in a project is usually very good because they're they're hitting everyone now. Also, each area, unincorporated or not, can set their own rates based on actual costs, which is a great. Flexibility item on individual service districts. So. The ability to have a subservice district, if that's how it can be constructed. Means you have one service district to do most everything fiber related and then you have sub districts for the different areas. Because they will have different costs. Okay, so.
Take your, take that mouse right there Elliot, grab the top of the box where you're speaking and pull it up to the top right hand corner. Should be a look at this if I can see the mouse. I'm not seeing the mouse. You see the mouse on the page?
Yep.
Where is it?
Right here, the key. Right there.
Sean, will you take care of that? There you go. Thank you.
Oh, I didn't share that problem. Thank you.
No problem.
Okay, so Plan C, the service district. Service district has overhead in required elected board, annual training, staffing, bricks and mortar, location. Auditing, then that's usually annual, so. That makes the cost a lot higher than say biannual or something. County could run it internally for a lot less, maybe at the cost of one person budget wise. And if it's set up as a sub district, the costs all flow down. To the area and users that are are doing it. It looks, I think, like what you have for a fire district because I know I'm in District Four, but you still have a county fire department. And it runs to fire stations. So I'm not sure how that that works. If service district for a whole county needed, the overhead can be spread over all the residents of the county, making it very low. When you're only having a cost of one person. Sub districts would cover each unincorporated area and individual cities separately. County could then set user fees by actual costs in each sub district. Utopia contracted to run it and county keeps the fee in within the fiber. District or whatever, however it's politically set up. The county keeps the fee that Utopia now charges for the capital cost and pays Utopia the operating costs out of it. When I've asked them about it, they say, well, you know, if county wants to own it and or the the service district wants to own it, they don't have a problem with it. They they get to run it and and develop it and that's that's what they're about. And then the county keeps the difference, including the lower finance costs and helps pay off bonds earlier. Which would also improve the bond ratings a lot better too. Service district would levy user fees of maybe ten to twenty dollars per user household per month above Utopia's model for Uwana Highlands. Now, I don't know what would be in the other unincorporated areas because the model hasn't been run in those areas to find out what what the cost would be. But it's much higher. So anything that can be done to lower the cost helps a lot. Model says that if Utopia will build it, this will be enough. With the service, because let me restate this. So you take what Utopia was saying, they think it would cost. Or ten to twenty dollars more per household per month. We can build it this way with a service district as long as the overhead is high. And we could be substantially less if we either get high subscription or we get higher than we think that is. Or if we can get to the two percent financing. So with the service district, if user fees are not enough in two years, the property tax could be levy. But I. I don't think that's going to be necessary and if it is, it's got to be extremely low. So, come on. Okay, now this isn't working. There we go. You went two screens. Two screens?
Okay, Plan A.
Yeah, back to Plan A. Utopia builds it county oversight. So then the question is, how do we get Weaver County to run the project? And again, the idea of a fire department is is a similar concept. There's a county fire department runs all the fire in the county when the city, in the areas the cities don't. So how do we get something structurally that works that way? Each unincorporated area is very different, which is why a sub district concept would work real well. Plan would have to allow for cities to use it too, and they could act just like a sub district. So they could say, oh, we're going to charge this much or whatever. They could also have whatever local work they want into their plan put in. County could run it for a whole lot less dollars. Because operating it is a service district is. The main overhead costs. Every time you subdivide and repeat it at lower levels, you're repeating those costs. So. If Weaver County gets the financing, especially through USDA financing, presumably through a service district or higher, we sub do it subwise. It'll be a lot less expensive, about four percentage points lower, and that could pay for a lot of the cost difference. Because you're figuring just in Uwana Highlands, that's four percent of over two million. What does it take not to have to tax everyone in the service district? The answer is simply enough fees. Okay. Next page. We build a model on Utopia survey. Now, this is the survey they do prior to building. Of how many are needed to take the service and how many indicated will sign up. If the fees are not enough, the backstop has been sales tax. I mean, that's the way a service district is 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 set up to do. Utopia model has always driven additional users and fees, which can be used to pay off financing or bonds a lot quicker. So need for property taxes unlikely due to likelihood of built in surplus working. If or when Uwana Highland launches and shown successful, cities could launch themselves or under county plan. Problems in other unincorporated county areas such as low density, larger parcels, et cetera. Can be addressed with a rural plan of overhead fiber. So that would be stringing your. Your fiber optic cables along telephone poles. County could decide if or when to turn over to a service district. And B. Plan B is the same as Plan A with another partner other than Utopia. Preliminary indications are that if done with an RFQ, other potential partners won't be able to accommodate Edwin. Which is essential to wildfire action plan. Or meet completion deadline. It won't be open access and it's not open to other ISPs. Which is other competition. Not entirely fiber optic cable and not resistant to power failures. Now, the way the Utopia does it is they string fiber optic cable from their radio shack all the way into. Individual homes. You don't need to boost it with extra power. Whereas anytime you introduce coax, you have to have at least one booster station in there. And that requires power locally, right in the neighborhood. And it will not have a dedicated speeds for upload and download. Comcast and other suppliers can still have a market competing with ISPs using open access platform. By offering more services such as cable channels and full service business services, also landline phones. And and they can also keep closed networks going profitably. Surveys in Kaysville and Leighton show both can coexist. Open access platforms, the ISPs tend to have limited additional services and low base costs. Leaving firewalls and cybersecurity measures to the user, but an increasing number are offering these as additional services. Many businesses have internal IT staff or they hire it out anyway and do not want to pay for it twice. A number of private households also prefer to do it themselves. That's me. If people want to buy the services with their internet, they still can. Overall. Open access lowers the base cost for households and businesses. And allows the market to create new and different services so that you can, you can buy what it is you you need. The market share in Kaysville and Leighton shows that the market is balanced with about the same number of subscribers with open access as Comcast. In other words, it's like about equal between them, which is ideal for competition, no market dominance and new potential entrance. Plan D, preferred plan. It has all the benefits of Plan C except without having to create a service district. The county handles it like other services for unincorporated areas. Because I know I see on my property tax sheet, it says that there's separate service charges on it. And I know that those are not to cover incorporated cities. It's only in the unincorporated county. I don't know how you do it, but I think somehow we ought to be able to work something using those kinds of features. So conclusions, building out Weaver County open access fiber may not be possible with federal or state grants. With the qualification requirements of the FCC as presently constituted. Each unincorporated area has significant differences from the other areas and a single approach for all probably will not work. Instead, it may be possible to add flexibility as done with individual fire districts, for example. For service areas under a service district run by the county. With flexible program, whole cities may want to participate in certain parts of the program. This makes it a countywide program to get open access fiber, which of course is great for. Recruiting new businesses to come in and. All kinds of residents, that's going to be what they're going to be looking for. What the statutes allow for legal structures may be the critical factor and that's where more discussions needed because. That's where all our questions are. We specifically need to understand how the county operates unincorporated specific taxing areas. And how some dis- special, excuse me. How some service districts can operate under the county. So that's one area we. Really like to know better. We need some direction here and can we formulate the planning so we can move forward? Ogden Valley needs help with the concepts also and is in dire need of immediate sewer district. Other districts operated by the county may also help other problems in this area. So it's got applications for a lot of other things going on in the county. If we can figure out how to do this, it may solve. A boatload of problems. So. Any and all questions? We're helping understanding service districts.
So you you. I I know there's a frustration with Comcast and Xfinity up there. That was a lot of the part of your first presentation. Up and up are you in a?
Okay, so we're talking.
Uwana Highlands, that's where Elliot's from. That's where he represents. You're anxious in trying to get better or another option. For service up there because what's been promised has not been delivered by the existing companies. Is that, is that correct?
Loosely. Xfinity Comcast didn't make a lot of promises and stuff they couldn't deliver because they knew they couldn't deliver it anyway, such as open access. They say policy wise, they don't do it. So you're never gonna be able to connect Edwin if Xfinity is the best option up there.
So commissioners, correct me if I'm wrong, um but we were approached about five, six, eight weeks ago, maybe it was eight weeks ago by Liberty Broadband. They came in and made application to the federal government, which we we said, hey, look, we will give you a letter of support. Uh they're a private company, they and they're delivering broadband to the people of the Upper Valley. How they're doing it and the quality of what they're doing it, but they petitioned for ten million dollars, wasn't it?
From the feds.
From the feds. And with the only
Also a state, I think you applied for a state grant too, then there or somebody.
Yeah, they've applied for a state grant as well.
So both, yeah, yeah. So is there a reason, I know one of the the big pushes up there is Utopia. Listen Elliot, this would benefit me as well. But I'm trying to look out for the entire county. We can, the entire county cannot obligate for a particular area unless we do a special service district like you're talking about. A special, uh what would be a special service district, wouldn't it Scott?
Yeah, but we have to define that around the boundaries of the area that's getting serviced. You couldn't define it around the whole county if Ogden City's not gonna get serviced. It can't be in the special service.
No, that's true.
So it would be basically you take your unincorporated area and you chop it up into pieces. You can say, okay, here's the you into Highland Special Service District. Here's the Upper Valley Eden Special Service District. Here's the Upper Valley Liberty Special Service District. Here's the West Weaver Special, you know what I mean?
Does that have to go to a vote to create a special service district?
If we wanna levy a tax, yes, but we we could potentially, and we talked about this before, split our municipal services fund into three, and you think if we did that, we wouldn't have to go to the vote of people.
That's what we talked about before.
But then that means that every time the roads department goes out, it needs to track, am I in you into Highlands? Am I in Liberty? Am I in Eden? Am I in Western Weaver County? For every special service district, we now need to track all the costs of our operations department down in each one of those specific areas. So there's some additional overhead there, because now we need to have the roads time, we need to have engineering's time, building inspections time. Cause now they're working for three separate entities essentially instead of one.
But that could still be cheaper than having each of those being an independent special service district.
I I don't know. Creating them as separate independent funds anyway. So we're splitting the municipal services into three.
Yeah, but you're you're having one engineering department do the engineering, you're having one transportation department do it all. They're just budgeting and charging separately. The same way a business says, okay, here's this job, you charge to this for the hours you need, and they have the separate accounting. But the overhead cost of managing it is much less than having each one do all the accounting itself at the lowest level.
So we're not gonna create three separate entities. You're right, it's all going to be the roads department, and they're going to be tracking all the time in their invoices. There will be an increase in the amount of overhead it takes to track and monitor that. And so it will cost us more in order to split that into three separate divisions, but it would be cheaper than running three separate cities. I agree with that.
Mm-hmm, you don't have the auditing uh requirements for representatives and everything else involved with boards, a separate board in each service district.
That's what he's saying.
Sure, sure. It's it would be cheaper than running three separate cities if we were to split our municipal services fund into three.
What we're talking about, it's not special service. You're talking about taking the municipal service like we talked about, we talked before about maybe having an upper valley, lower valley.
Yeah.
Now we're talking about maybe three versus two.
Well, yeah, because we talked about that, but what we would do is essentially convert the municipal services district into a special service district. There's a provision in the code that allows
Okay.
the county to use a special service district to provide municipal type services in its unincorporated areas.
Got it.
So we we could do that. We talked about doing that several years ago before we did the municipal services fund tax increases. Say, well, why don't we split into an upper and lower?
Yeah.
Upper, lower, and Highland. We could go back and revisit that a lot, but if we wanted to. The question is, I I would think is one step before that, is is this the business that Weaver County wants to get into? Or do we wanna try to help Liberty Broadband be successful in giving them a letter of support, maybe throwing some market dollars to help them? If they get that grant, then they build it out on their own, then they're completely responsible for it. We're all, I mean, we're not related to it at all. So kind of like helping your, was it Plan A or Plan B?
Oh, Utopia?
Well, not Utopia, but a third party for anybody, whether it's Utopia or Liberty Broadband or Utah Broadband or SpaceX or whoever.
Mm-hmm.
So is it a business that Weaver County Corporation wants to get into? Do we wanna start providing internet services? Or do we want to help other third parties who are in that business do that? I mean, that's a a policy question.
It's a big difference.
Hold on Elliot, what's your question? What's your comment on that commissioner?
Well, frankly, the way I look at it right now, unincorporated uh Weaver County doesn't pay enough to support their own weight now today. So why should we get into these services for them? You know, I I'm not interested in doing any of this from incorporated Weaver County. Uh at their current rate structure, that's just the way I did.
Even if the user fees paid for it?
Well, as long as we didn't have to put a whole lot of effort into it. Users fees, uh that's a good point, if if the user fees pay for it.
Will there be a new user fee?
But I don't necessarily wanna be in the internet business.
That was the question.
Hmm, yeah, I I don't wanna be in the internet business.
Commissioner Fur.
Yeah, I don't see that's a critical issue or critical service for the county to provide. But I am in support of encouraging private enterprise to provide those services, just like Huntsville's done. And if we if we have the ability to provide some stimulus or some type of seed money for Liberty Broadbands or whoever.
Or the Utopias or whoever.
I don't care who it is. Whoever wants to service that area could come to us and say, look, we want a ARPA grant of some nature, but we'll provide it. I, to me, that's a private industry service that should be provided. I I mean, once you go to internet, you know, where where does the county stop providing services?
I know the thing about Utopia is they provide the hardware platform. And then the ISPs commit on that, so you're preserving the uh competition. And you can have any company compete. Liberty, if I'm familiar with the history of it, I think that was started by a guy named Malone. Um they do the same thing Comcast says. They put their cable in the ground, they own it, nobody else is allowed on it. They do not allow even governments to go on it. So again, you couldn't do Edwin on the Liberty concept. The the difference here with what we're looking at, we're looking at an open access requirement. That's that's the big difference.
So are you pushing Utopia?
If there were another company that did the exact same thing, we would be looking at looking at them as an equal competitor to Utopia. The problem is, nobody does everything that Utopia is doing currently. They all wanna own their their cable and not let anyone else on it, because they look at it like
Yeah, I was always down on Utopia. I fought him for all his worth in the legislature. But that fight's over with, the way I look at it now, and Utopia is successful. They've got things up, they're running, and frankly, my company's on it in uh Salt Lake City uh in West Valley there, we're on Utopia, and we've had one short uh stint that was off in the five or six years we've been on it. So we're very, we're very positive about Utopia and it works pretty good. Uh and you know, the it's a great model. Uh if you wanna do something like that.
Well, I like the open access of Utopia. I mean, that's one thing I do like.
I do too.
And I think it's a, I agree with Commissioner Jenk, it's a proven entity now where ten years ago it wasn't. In fact, it was on its last legs at a certain point.
Yeah, that's fair.
Yeah, that was. They came, they wanted more money from the legislature.
I'm not arguing. I think it's fair. That's a fair characterization.
Yeah, but they're they're successful now.
Yeah, yeah.
They're finally over that hum, uh that tipping point, and they're out there now uh taking on more cities and more successes as time goes and I I view them as a very viable option now.
Yeah.
Well, they have, I mean, Utopia is financed by, I mean, it's publicly financed, right? The user fees don't pay for it and the property tax.
That's the part that bothers me about Utopia, is that what backstop do they want from us?
So of course that be provided by a city. The cities make that decision.
But it what we're, if we're gonna do this, if we have service.
It's unincorporated, the next
That's true though.
Yeah.
Yeah. But I mean
Well, the backstop to it would be the uh the service district would raise taxes.
Yeah, no, that's exactly right.
That's that's exactly what I'm saying is a possible way to address this. The county can start moving down this path as a county and say, well, we want this study or we want cost proposals and so forth. And then they can say at whatever point they want, we want to delegate this or or pass this on down to a service district. Now, what I'm talking about in terms of flexibility, I'd have to work it out with you to figure out what the state law allows. But to be able to pick up a municipality as one of these sub-districts allows you to cover a hundred percent of the county. And first and foremost, you have unincorporated areas can immediately become part of this. Each unincorporated area would operate as a separate sub-district. And each city that wants to come in would come in like a sub-district. The advantage to a city is they don't have to manage it either. And they can have this group management of this done so that it saves costs. If they don't want it done that way, they can run it themselves. Do a Murray Power Company type thing where they charge extra to raise revenue. I mean, anything, anything could be possible, because they're, each one has a sub-district.
If it's county-wide, we'd have to go to the vote of people, because there it's gonna levy a property tax. So you'd have to get everybody in the county to vote on that. If you're doing it just unincorporated, there's a provision in the statute that allows us to split that out, but we wanna bring in every city, so you'd have to get every Ogden City resident or majority to vote.
Tarrasville, Plain City.
You have to get a majority of the county residents to vote for this.
But could you start it in the unincorporated areas and later convert the structure of that to a county-wide service district by vote? It's just flexibility, so you can do it later.
The question is, is do you wanna do that, though? I mean, do you wanna have now the entire county and every city is backstopping the internet infrastructure? I mean, I guess that'd be the question is Ogden want? Do they have enough high-speed internet now? Do they want another Utopia-type provider in their city?
Good question. I don't know.
I don't know. I mean, that that's a, that's a very big question to do to county-wide. I think that's
But you could pick up each city individually as they requested to come into it. Is that an adequate vote?
Well, I don't know when you want to bring them into, I don't know the annexation process, I'd have to check on that. If we wanted to start out county-wide, it would be a vote of the county.
I understand that, but I'm looking at going from the opposite direction. Had cities that wanna go in.
Yeah, I don't know.
That's happening right now in other cities. Uh for example, far west, they just finished having uh broadband or fiber run through their city. I watched them do it. Well, Plain City is right in the middle of it right now. They're, they just started that.
And that's Plain City, not the special service district.
I know, so that my point to you is none of those people will wanna join.
Yeah.
Because they're getting it today.
Yeah, and I would almost argue that if each city wants to make that decision, why wouldn't they do it on their own? Why would they join a special service district?
To lower the online management cost. It's just, it's it's an option. It's not a requirement.
Sure.
And I'm trying to look at something that's as flexible as possible that addresses all the county if needed.
I'd love for you to
That's why I'm
So Elliot, I'd love for Utopia to come in here and sit down like Liberty Broadband did and say, listen, we wanna be able to to run in the uh the county right of ways, lay our fiber down and run a system. It would, I would be, I'd be all in favor of that. But I don't want to obligate the entire county, even at the expense of me personally gaming on this. I I don't wanna obligate the entire county. I don't feel like that's fair. But if Utopia would cut for a backstop, if Utopia would come in, if they're that if they're that strong and they're that good, and you have the market research to show that the take rate's gonna be that good, let's get it going. Let's get it moving. I don't understand why they haven't. I really don't. With the business that we're doing with other companies, I don't understand why, what what Utopia's holdup is.
Their model basically is built for a city that can do the backstop. As an unincorporated area, uh we, you in a Highlands, can't do that. So I'm not sure exactly what Liberty Media is doing in the Upper Valley, if they can do it. I think it's because they they uh
They find a way to say yes.
They're they're doing it because they've got the deep enough pockets. The size of the company is in the billions of dollars. They're just about as big as uh as as Comcast is now.
Liberty Broadband?
Liberty Broadband, not Liberty Media, Liberty.
Now, that Liberty Broadband may be now a separate company. It used to be, I think, the way it started.
It's a pretty small company.
Yeah. And these are a couple of guys that lived up in the valley. These are a couple of guys that lived up in the valley and they started their own deal a few years ago.
I think we checked their financials. They didn't, they didn't have enough.
Ten employees there.
Yeah.
They don't, they're not that big.
And if they can do it, uh Utopia can do it. It's really, I mean, I know that's their we'd love to, we would love to, I'd love to give them a letter of support to wherever they wanna go after. I'm a little surprised they haven't. I wish they would.
But Utopia, I think if I understand you correctly, saying Utopia doesn't wanna jump into a new area unless they have a guarantee from the city of property tax. And I'm willing to take a financial risk to say, I'm gonna lay lines and sell my service. I'm not slamming Utopia, I'm just saying, they're not willing to do this. They're gonna say, I'm not gonna do that unless I have a guaranteed way to cover my costs, because I don't wanna then have an operating loss tax on all the other cities.
That's exactly right.
They they in that two-year window that they basically pre-fund, that's their window to get profitable. And they have been doing that in every place in the last ten years.
I trust them to be smart businessmen, and if they're that smart and they're that good at their numbers, the take rate that you've already provided, I'd give them the comfort and the need that they ought to use to move forward without having a county backstop.
Well, they've said that they use their survey rather than mine, and I can see why. It, their survey is a lot more specific, and it's got a lot more questions on it.
I would love to talk to him again under that criteria. I think all of us would. I I don't think we'd get a you'd be okay with that? You'd be okay with that?
Yeah, absolutely.
So if you can, if you can do, put on the soft shoe dance and let him come in here, I'm just not willing to do the backstop. I think that's where we all are. We can't obligate the entire county. And I'd love for him to, I'd love for him to start digging as soon as possible.
What if we could do it slightly different than that by starting with the county-run service district, so that the that the service district would be the taxing entity instead of the county?
Does it, so to start a whole special service district?
Well, if I, if I understood how it was done.
Hold on, let me.
I have questions about that.
What would it take to do a special service district?
And if we, if we need it, we can, we can switch it.
It's a vote of the people if it's a special service district. Vote of the people, because it has taxing authority, property tax authority. If it's going to be the municipal services fund, and maybe we split the municipal services district to provide all municipal services and add internet to that, we may be able to get around going to vote of people, but that means the municipal services fund is now backstopping the the infrastructure costs.
And it doesn't have the capital to do that?
We, no, if if we ever had to, we'd have to raise taxes to support that if.
But then you'd end up, in order to be fair with that, you'd have to split that.
We'd have to split it into three different areas, unless we did it in all three areas.
Everything was positive. You're not gonna, yeah, you've got a
But the tax increase would still be Weaver County Commissioners voting for the tax increase.
For that area.
Yeah, even though we call it by a different name, it's still
Yeah.
it's still Weaver County Corporation that's running this.
You're right, yeah.
What what if it was done starting that way, but at the point, decision point where it's, do we have to have a county backstop or do we want it in a separate district? Because this question is John's bringing up, of whether Utopia can uh do the backstop themselves. What if we make that the decision point of making it a separate service district?
I guess I don't see the difference. So you make it a separate service district if it has taxing authority and it's not Weaver County Municipal Services Fund, it's gotta go to the vote of people. So that's how you create a special service district. And yeah, and it has, if it has taxing authority, not just user fees, the taxing authority, and it would have to, because it has to have a backstop.
Well
So if you're saying
I think to that point would be preparation, not actual operation.
So we'd just go through the motions and not really do it?
No, you go through the motions and you get to a decision point, and you decide, is it gonna stay or does it go to a service district?
I mean
Cause then you you have the vote and you go service district if it's if it's gotta go that way. Because what that does is it combines the two paths into like a Y. You start up the Y together and then and then you make a decision at that point. And you either go on the service district route or you're you're going as a part of the municipal district.
I think before we even get to that point, commissioners have to be willing to let municipal services fund or the special service district be a backstop for it. And they have to decide that they wanna either get into the internet business as a special service fund or in the internet business as a municipal services fund. So I mean, those are, those are
We've already talked about that, Elliot. We don't, and we have the support for that.
Yeah. Okay, so if a special service district is set up, can it do the sub-district management that you were talking about with the different unincorporated areas?
I would suspect a special service district could do that through their I would suspect a special service district could do that through their internal accounting and set their fees appropriately. So that would be fine. But again, you're still back onto. A special service district with taxing authority that's run by the Weaver County Commissioners because they would be. The board of directors of the special service district. So it's not a local district, it's a special service district. Meaning, no matter what we call it, these three men are still in charge of that district. Any property tax increase has to go through them for a vote. Their budget has to be approved by them. So they still run it, even though. We call it something other than Weaver County Corporation, they're still in charge of it because it's a special service district. A local service district would have its own separate, the Gorg or something, Gorg or anything different.
Sorry to interrupt the discussion. Would you have just another couple minutes to maybe answer some additional questions you have, Mr. Moses? We need to conclude right now. We've got a, a COVID update with our health director on the line right now. So.
Sure.
We need to terminate this conversation and Christie, if you could get Mr. Cowan ready. Thank you for coming in, Elliot. We'd love to.
I think we got just about all of it covered. I just got some specific questions. Who was your name again?
Scott.
Scott. That'd be great. So that'd be good and I appreciate your time.
You bet.
I figured we'd get through that, so. Leave this up. I guess I just need my drive.
Yeah, let's get the thumb drive off and then Sean, can you get us ready and let Mr. Cowan in? Thank you, Elliot. Appreciate you caring.
Yeah, well, I, I still think there's possibilities here, even though you're. Trying to constrain it because you, you see what, what the objectives are that you need to meet.
And we've made a lot of effort to try to get that accelerated through CARES Act funding and everything over the last two years. It's just, we're running into. Roadblocks, whether it's federal or state, it's just been a difficult thing.
But I think these service district ideas might, might be of the path.
Okay.
All right, thanks.
Thank you. Okay, Commissioners, we're so lucky and fortunate to have our very own Brian Cowan here. Today. Uh, this Fabio over the lip look-alike. Fellas ready with this for our three P M COVID update. Mr. Cowan, thank you. You can go ahead.
Uh, thank you, Commissioner Harvey, for those kind words. Appreciate that. Uh, I've got a quick update for you. Uh, really kind of starting off, I just want to express the good news. And that is where, as we look at our fourteen-day average or even our twenty-one-day average, uh, we are on a downward trend. For positive cases per day and, uh, and number of active cases in our area. We did see a little bit of an uptick of cases after the Thanksgiving holiday, starting about seven days, uh, to fourteen days after, but. As we look at that, the la, over the last three weeks, we are on a downward trend and it's a, it's a good trend for us to be on. Kind of a highlight for that at the Health Department is Morgan County. Uh, in the last week has moved from the high transmission index down to a moderate transmission index on the state's COVID transmission. Transmission index. Weaver County, we are getting closer to the threshold that changes us from. Uh, high to moderate. And I think if we stay on the same trajectory that we are currently on, we should, uh. See a reclassification of Weaver County to a moderate transmission index, probably in the next, uh, I'd, I'd say about three weeks out. From that, uh, so that it's a good, good place for us to be. Total number of cases, forty-nine thousand, six hundred and two, uh, as of today. That's, uh, as, as we look at active cases, we have one thousand nine hundred and thirty-four active. That's a decrease. Of two hundred and eighty-four active cases from what, uh, we were seeing last week. Seven-day average is eighty-one new cases a day, and that's also a decrease. Three weeks out, we were reporting a hundred and twenty-two active cases and then it's been down to, uh, a hundred and two and now we're down to eighty-one. So again, that trend of decreasing active cases in our area. Sadly, uh, we've had an increase in deaths though. We are up to three hundred and fifty-two deaths. From COVID-related illness. That's an increase of ten over what we had for last week. Our hospitalizations, um, are, are on an interesting trend. Um, the COVID cases are staying consistent, but our ICU capacity has increased. Which is a reflection of other, um, use of the ICU beds in our two hospitals where it, uh, the highest. Capacity that, uh, since, uh, September at one hundred and forty percent occupancy. But only twenty-two of those, uh. Uh, there's forty-two ICU beds set up out of a normal inventory of thirty. Only twenty-two of those forty-two are ICU rate-related. The other, uh, twenty are other, other ICU, uh. Related care at the hospital. So it's kind of interesting statistic to watch. The COVID hospitalizations are. Staying even or, or declining just slightly, but the hospital use is, is increasing for other. Other uses of the hospital. And that could, um, I don't have the influenza statistics, but this is the time of year when we see increases in hospitalizations. As a result of influenza. So part of that could be, uh, related to influenza. As we look at, um, our school situation, again, uh, optimistic view there. Things are going well. Uh, we have a reduction of active cases down to, uh, one hundred and fifty active cases in our schools right now. That's. Over the last three weeks, that has dropped from two hundred and fifty active cases. So a good, good declining trend there. Um, a hundred and thirty-two of those active cases are in students, twelve of those are in teachers, and then fourteen of those are in other staff. Probably have at least one positive case in seventy-eight of our schools. So we've seen a reduction. In the number of schools impacted over the last week. Uh, and we don't have any schools that are halfway to their test-to-state threshold or to their, uh, you know. Even to the test, the two percent or the thirty cases of the test-to-state threshold. So our schools are doing well with their cases. And managing those, uh, in our schools, we've identified one thousand and twenty-two. Uh, people, most of those students that we've asked to quarantine because they've been exposed to a positive case, but, um. This kind of good, the good summary there is we're managing those school cases. Uh, well, with our staff and the school district staff and, and helping keep the schools open and the students in school, so. Uh, kind of my quick report for today, um. I think it's, there's, you know, it's less to talk about when, when we're trending downwards. It's a good place to be. Maybe, maybe real quick, I could just mention, uh, vaccinations. Uh, still as many or string, as many of those as we can. Uh, we are up to. Uh, nineteen percent of our five to eleven-year-olds being vaccinated with one dose now. Um, and then our, our twelve to eighteen, nineteen to twenty-nine and thirty, thirty-nine-year-olds. Uh, still seeing about one percent growth in uptake of those, but our thirty to thirty-nine-year-olds have, uh. Passed the seventy percent threshold in, in the state. That's a good number to be at for that age.
That's good.
The nineteen to twenty-nine-year-olds were at sixty-eight percent. So we're seeing some improvement in that aged demographic as well.
So Brian, could somebody just walk in the door over there and get a booster shot?
We're asking people to schedule appointments. We have the availability for about two hundred, uh. Shots a day, uh, if we do it through appointments. So they, they can jump on our website, schedule an appointment. There and we'll get them in and out as quick as we can.
Well, and they can just walk in and call me, would you?
Okay. Well, Commissioner, if it's you, I'll, I'll make an appointment for you.
Don't worry about it. I don't, I'm not asking for any special attention.
Great report, Brian. It's a great report. Great report. Any other questions, Commissioners?
Oh, sure.
Brian, you've done a wonderful job. Appreciate your help and service very much. Thank you. Uh, we look forward to. We'll probably do this again one more time next week. Uh, let's hope those numbers continue to move in a positive direction.
I, I agree. Thanks, Commissioner.
Good luck. Appreciate you. All right, Commissioners. What a great report. I'll have a motion to saunter for until approximately three thirty. When we'll have a closed discussion. Second, all in favor? Hi, motion, we'll, we'll.
Okay. All right. If I remember right, they were still working on with possibly Morgan County and bringing water up.
That's the last we heard.
Okay.
But they didn't know if it was feasible yet.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, so basically all we're doing is approve, we're just approving their district. And then there, it's up to them to come up with wherever the water is.
Okay.
Yeah, I get it. This, tomorrow's resolutions will, will set us up to submit to the Lieutenant, Lieutenant Governor.
Okay. So all we're doing tomorrow is denying it.
We're denying the request for service, but then we also have to approve certification of their petition. We're not approving their petition because they already.
Right, just certification of it.
Yeah, we're just.
Okay, so I have no issues with any of this. Let's do it and then we'll sit down and talk about it later.
Any other questions, Gage? Any questions?
No, this is, we're just following the procedure.
No, I'm fine with that too.
They should have their, uh, P I D application in this week.
Okay. Very good. Anything else on this? Let's move on to item eight, which is a discussion regarding the Weaver Morgan Health Department Board point. Thank you, Mr. Brett. You're gonna have to settle down though next time you come in here. Just a little.
Pull that door shut, Steph.
Mr. Cowan, come in.
I'm tagging along.
Oh, here we go.
Hi there.
Go ahead and tilt that.
Good to see you again.
You as well. Nice to be over in person.
Yeah. Great to have you here.
Thanks. You ready for us?
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, so real quick, we're here to talk about a resolution to add, uh, appoint some new members to the Board of Health. We've had a few members whose terms expire. And some new names that, uh, in some cases it's the same person, in some cases it's new people to appoint to those positions. Um, I believe Brandon's put together a resolution with the names of the people and the individuals in their positions.
You're recommending?
Yeah, yeah. Um, Dr. Brown has been on the Board of Health for, for years and years. Uh, he represents the. Society and they've given us a better for him and supportive him running and representing. Them again in his position. Um, our current, uh, Vice Chair of the Board of Health is. Uh, Ally Martinez over at Midtown Clinic. Um, the resolution that created the Board of Health has identified that we have someone from Midtown Clinic on the board to represent them. Ally's, uh, Board of Trustees, Trustees has sent a letter to recommend, uh, their support for her, uh, continuing in that position. We have the, a position on the Board of Health that represents our hospitals in the area. And that position rotates, uh, the K D for, for one term and then the next term would go to Ogden Regional. Uh, for Ogden Regional, we've got Jason Boran, their Chief Operation Officer, um, that has indicated a willingness and a desire to serve. And we've got a letter of support from their board as well for that, for him filling that.
Did he make some movies?
Did he make some movies?
Okay, so.
Um, and then. We have a school district position that also.
Rotates.
Rotates. Um, and the, the turn in the rotation right now is for the Morgan School District and their superintendent, um. I'm now drawing a diagram. Doug Jacobs is, uh, willing to serve on the board for the next three years in that term. Uh, so we, we would like to appoint him. Doug Jacobs.
Who's had that position right now?
Um, that has been Jerry Bates or Jer Bates.
It rotates between Weaver Ogden and.
Yeah, Jer Bates has been the current one.
Right, okay.
I think that covers them.
Questions? This is in our portfolio, Commissioner Farrar? Comments?
No, I think they're all good. I mean, I don't know the Morgan County, but that's really their recommendations and that's how I do I look at it, but.
So Commissioner Jenkins?
I'm okay with the others.
Well, I want to sit down and talk to you two in private about these appointments.
Okay.
And you know why, Harv?
Yep.
That's right. So before I commit to anything, I want to talk.
When is it on our agenda? Have you placed it on there yet?
It's for tomorrow, on the agenda for tomorrow.
Okay.
Um, the terms expire at the end of the year. It, it would be nice to have people appointed for our January meeting, which happens on the twenty-fourth, but if. That doesn't happen, it's okay. We still have, still have enough active terms on the board to create a quorum. Um, and we can continue business until.
They come off January one?
December thirty-first is the end of their term.
You'll have to remind me of the, on the bylaws, but at least for special and local districts. People who are currently serving can continue to serve until they are, are replaced. So even if their term ends at the end of the year.
Oh, really?
They can continue to serve if, if there's a delay.
Okay.
And so there's no interruption in service.
Right.
We'll confirm, but that, I mean, that is common.
Okay, anything else?
Well, I, maybe if I could just add a little bit. We're three, we're three years into the new makeup of the Board of Health. Um, it took, took us several years to get to the, the situation where that, where we are at with the current interlocal agreement. I, I feel there's been a real benefit to our department, having the additional board members and the broader spectrum.
How many board members were before?
Uh, before, we had eleven.
Now we have thirteen. Okay.
Especially during our COVID response, having the direct, uh, interaction that we had and the contact with the school districts. And the hospitals has, has been really invaluable and we didn't have those in our Board of Health prior.
Why is the school district so valuable, Brian?
Uh, just this last year in having those contacts at the school districts and being able to manage. The COVID cases at the schools, um, having that direct contact to get information to the schools as quickly as we can. We can and develop the teams to respond to that.
You don't think you could have done that without a, uh, board member?
I, I really think having a board member has been very beneficial to help us negotiate that. Um, without the board member. It, uh, our staff would have been left up to having to, to figure out how the school districts operate internally. And where the best, best, you know, approach would be to work with them. Having that person on the board over the last two years has been able to get us right in to pinpoint where we needed to go for what we needed to get done.
And you also mentioned hospitals.
Yeah, hospital administrator has been very helpful, helpful in helping us understand. How the hospitals work, what the cases have done to them and their day-to-day operations and how. We can make sure that we're messaging, uh, in a way from the Health Department that doesn't create additional burden for them at the hospitals. Um, as, uh, Donna Chapman has been the representative from the K D Hospital and she's been really helpful. Uh, with us and helping prepare our messaging for vaccination and do it in a way to make sure that we weren't. Uh, inadvertently directing people to the hospitals, uh, for information or, or to try and get that vaccination so that, you know, it didn't create an additional workload for them. And I, and too with the hospitals, I think it's going to come back to the same thing we experienced with the school districts. Um, having that person help us understand the internal workings of those organizations. Really helped us pinpoint where we needed to go to, to get the things done we needed to do.
Great. Also, how, how's it helped by having member of the Midtown Clinic?
Um, it helps us better coordinate the services that we offer at the Health Department as well as the services they offer there at Midtown. Uh, mid, having Midtown Clinic in, in central Ogden is one of the reasons that. Our Health Department doesn't offer a lot of clinical services. Uh, it's because we can, we have that partnership with them and can direct them. For that personal care aspect and help us stay more focused on the community aspect of, of the county.
I view them as key.
Yeah.
They weren't on the board before.
No.
Ally does a great job too. They had Toby.
You know, I, I can, I can appreciate the, the makeup of the Board of Health. Um, i- is something we need to broach appropriately and make sure we have the right people and the right. People to represent our community on the board. Um, and in the past, you know, there's, there's been. Times when our Board of Health operated very well with the, with the number of elected officials and, and public representation that we had. Uh, but there was also times when it was dysfunctional because of that makeup. I think the last three years in the attempt with the board members that we've had, we've been able to demonstrate that a board with. Community input can be effective and efficient and help the Health Department pro, provide better services to our community. And we can also work with ways like we've done over the last year to improve how our department interacts with the elected officials in our area. Not, you know, not only the three of you, but our mayors and, and the WACOG organization and be. Open and receptive to their concerns as well and address those, you know, with, with the makeup of the Board of Health that we currently have. And I think when it comes to the budget aspect of the Health Department. Um, the relationship that our department has with Weaver County has worked. um, the relationship that our department has with Weaver County has worked pretty well over the last three years and preparing our budgets and our department helping keep, you know, keeping you informed on what we're doing with our money and how, how and why we need to spend that. And I, I'm not sure that that would be enhanced if we changed the makeup of the Board of Health again and just and went to all three of the Commissioners on the Board of Health. I, and I, I just bring that up for discussion. I'm not not trying to imply that that may be something that's, that's being considered or discussed. It's just been my experience with the board. I think the current board we have has been, been very beneficial to our department. It's been useful and I think the working relationship with our department and the commission both here in Weaver and in Morgan have improved over the last three years under that direction of our Board of Health.
If I can be, I, I, and I hope I would rather this stay in this platform here. My only criticism has been the way that it was messaged originally through COVID and your PR side. That was my only part that we had, we had, just we were inundated with telephone calls because of that. Everything else, as far as I'm concerned, is great.
Yeah, I, I appreciate that your criticism and we, and we know, uh, you know, and, and I don't, I don't know if you're asking for a defense or not, but in order to advance, we did the best we could. Uh, and it was an experience that not only statewide, but nationwide. Uh, I think a lot of elected officials in local areas heard very similar types of concerns or complaints. We, we were tasked with, with, with a task that was very hard to, to approach.
Course afterthoughts are a twenty-twenty vision, right? But there's a lot of stuff in advance. I, I think we have a pretty good plan. Anyway, that's all, that's all one under the bridge now. So.
Yeah, and I, and I don't disagree with that, but again, I don't think the board uh, deserves any of the fault or credit for what took place at that point in time. It was pretty much out of the board's control. Everything was moving forward through Brian and Kaylin, that group, so.
I've sure been happy with you on the board, Commissioner Farrar.
Well, thanks. They're not, sometimes they're not too happy with me, but it's. You know, I, I really say, and I understand where Commissioner Jenkins is coming from. I kind of had the same thought. Um, my opinion is, is it's nice to have the expertise in those areas, like the hospitals, Midtown Clinic. Um, have the availability of those people on the board and have, in the school districts to have that communication. So I'm probably not in support of trying to change the makeup right now.
Well, and, and with that, Commissioner Farrar, I think I've learned a lot over the last year, uh, as the Health Officer and, and one thing I know. But let, one lesson I know I've learned and, and tried to work and improve on is how I interact with the three of you as the Commissioners. And I really think our weekly COVID updates have helped improve that communication. Um, and I, and I know I feel a lot more comfortable bringing issues to the three of you than I, than I did a year ago. It, it doesn't feel so much like the principal's office.
Oh, we all work for the county just in different spots.
Yeah. And, and I, I do think as we, as we look at this and the responsibility of the boards and the, and the Health Officer at the Health Department, really it's, it's probably falls more on my shoulders to make sure that our department's communicating directly with the three of you than it does on the Board of Health.
Yeah, I agree.
I mean, to me, the board serves their purpose as far as communication, information, but as far as direct contact and delivery of the services, then it kind of comes back to us. You know, between your, what you guys do and us is the board's there for to give information. I don't see them as an executive body. So anyway, that's my two cents.
You know, I looked up the bylaws and the statute. I can't see anything that allows a board member to continue in the place, uh, once past their expiration. Either we'll need to make sure that it's pointed, the members are pointed before then or that we have a quorum, uh, for January's meeting.
Any other questions?
I, I, I guess the question I have is tomorrow.
You're on the agenda.
For tomorrow. So we'll be there for the meeting. Where, uh, meeting starts at ten o'clock.
Yeah, I don't know what number you are, but.
Okay.
It's a long agenda.
Is it? Is it a long one?
You've been gone for a whole week.
Yeah, catching up.
So long as I haven't been to Disneyland.
Great. Okay. All right.
I'll make sure I'm there and Brandon, you'll be there as well, right? Brandon and I will coordinate.
You have sixteen items.
We do? Sixteen action items?
And then a public hearing.
Yeah. Are you kidding me? Christie?
To see the efficiency of government.
Ah, just.
Here we go. Let's keep those comments, you know.
Oh, and the, the public hearings on the tax.
Public hearings on your amendments.
We'll be.
On the amendments also.
Yeah.
I don't like that a lot of debate on that.
We'll try and keep ours short and sweet.
Scott's girlfriend, Carolyn.
Well, look at what we got here. All right, great. Thank you very much. We're gonna move on to our, we're gonna move on to our item number nine on this agenda, which is a closed session.
Wow, we got nine.
Discussion regarding the purchase, exchange or lease of real property. I'm gonna look for a motion to go into closed sessions. Second, a motion in a second, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Christie?